Thompson, how are you?
Good.
You're not getting it. Okay. Welcome to tonight's council meeting of Tuesday, February the 26th. I hope everyone likes my aerodynamic haircut. One of the councillors was calling me Kojak tonight, for those of you old enough to remember Kojak. I won't say who, but one of the councillors in this room. Anyway, what we normally do, we start off with our National Anthem. And I know we're a little late coming from our in-camera meeting, so our National Anthem singer had to leave. So we do have a video version, and I know oftentimes Rocky Vacca will join us and sing "Oh, Canada", more of a Luciano Pavarotti kind of operatic approach. So if you would approach the microphone, that'd be great, we'd appreciate that, Rocky. So whenever you're ready, Mr. Acting Clerk.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. (Music)
Thank you very much, please be seated.
Mr. Mayor, that sinum make me cry. I wish I was free. Here's some red for you, and then both come through.
Okay.
I wish I was free for you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we move along to the adoption of the minutes. Motion by councillor Peter Angelo, second by councillor Strange that we accept the minutes from the February 12th meeting, 2019. All those in favor, thank you very much. Do we have any disclosures of a peculiar interest tonight of councillors? Do we have any disclosures? Okay, seeing none, I will just quickly, I have very brief mayor's remarks. First off, on the obituaries, we'd like to offer our condolences to Felicia Skorinji, who passed away, the mother of Vito Skorinji, formerly of our Recreation and Culture Department. I'd like to thank the following councillors for representing the city. Councillor Strange for representing the state of Niagara, Chinese Business Council Awards. To councillor Campbell for the 60th wedding anniversary certificate presentation of Marilynne and Bernie Naring. And to councillor Dubrowski for representing the city at the Winter Festival of Lights Volunteer Appreciation Dinner and Sparkle Lighting Award. And as well the puck drop and check presentation for Hotel Dushaver's 50th Anniversary Celebrity Ice Cup All-Star Game. And lastly, to councillor Peter Angelo for representing the city at the coldest night of the year in support of Project Share. Our next council meeting will be Tuesday, March the 19th. So because we were delayed starting council because of our delayed in-camera meeting, we're gonna go directly to the planning matter portion, simply because this was advertised. And we do wanna follow, this was advertised for 6 o'clock, I believe. Yes, Mr. Acting Clerk, so we're gonna jump ahead now since it's 6:30. Councillor Peter Angelo.
Under the mayor's announcements, I just, I know you got some good news on Friday. I mean, I don't really wanna steal it, but would you mind sharing it with all the council?
No, thank you for that, councillor. After calling me Kojak earlier, that's a little turnabout. No, I got great news, on Friday, this week I had my third PET scan. And you go to Hamilton and St. Joe's, get a PET scan, and it tells you the internal lookings of your body. And came up completely clear of cancer. So it's, all the organs are clear, 100% good. So for the next five years, every three months, I'll go see my oncologist. But the good news is it's all done, so yeah.
And I can honestly say, your worship, that we all feel that that's great news. And you look better, you're acting more like yourself once again, so it's great to have you back.
Thank you for that, we'll see how long you feel that way, councillor.
Not until the other meeting.
Yeah, I was down 45, I'm back up 25. Yeah, I was down 45, I'm back up 25, so my concern now is I don't wanna overshoot the runway. So that's right, keeping an eye on things. So thanks very much, I really appreciate that, means a lot. So first up, now moving on to the planning matters for our public meeting, which is 8.1. For anyone following along in your agendas, I now ask our acting city clerk to introduce the next item on the agenda.
Public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to rezone the lands to residential 1E density to allow creation of 11 new lots for single detached dwellings at 6666 Mountain Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, January 25th, 2019, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passing of the zoning bylaw amendment or would like to preserve their opportunity to appeal to the local planning appeal tribunal shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, I now ask our Director of Planning, Mr. Hurlovic, to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. The property fronts on Mountain Road and then extends all the way down the west side of Marinelli Drive and ends at the Hollage Road Trail. So the property is highlighted in blue on the screen, and to the north and to the west and for the east, for that matter, are all residential single detached dwellings. I mentioned the Hollage Road Trail butts the property on the, on the south side of the property. The proposal is to change the property from development holding zone to an R1E zone. There's currently a detached dwelling up near the front on Mountain Road. And the proposal is to rezone the whole of the property for, to an R1E zone, which is a zone for detached dwellings. And their proposal is, well, the city clerk said 11 lots. The whole property could accommodate the 11 lots. The proposal at this point is to proceed with eight, or six lots through a consent process through the Committee of Adjustment at a later date. So what we're dealing with today is the zoning to go from development holding to an R1C zone. The Niagara region looked at the property, they did find that it meets the intent of the provincial policies. The, an archaeological assessment was completed for the property. There are no mitigation measures required with respect to noise studies. The area was previously used for agricultural purposes. And therefore, the region is looking for a record of site condition to ensure that there's no contamination due to pesticides that may have been used on crops that were grown on this property at one point. And the region is also looking for a 3.05 meter widening along the Mountain Road frontage. The, we did hold a neighbourhood meeting in November of last year. A number of residents came out, they were concerned about the smaller lot size, concerned about additional traffic on the street. And there was a fence requested along the west side of the property between the existing residential dwelling and the proposed dwellings on Marinelli Drive. The proponents commented back that the land use is compatible with existing development since it's to be for detached dwellings. The building setbacks are the same as those on the east side of Marinelli Drive. The zoning requested is very, the same as the Terra Vita subdivision located to the east of Marinelli Drive. And that fencing would be up to future property owners. City does not require fencing between single detached dwellings. We only require fencing where we have multifamily, say townhouses against singles or apartments against singles. As I said, the provincial policy statement is satisfied. The city's official plan designates the lands as residential. The minimum density requirement is 20 units per hectare. And this proposed development as an R1E would have 24.75 units per hectare. So it just meets that minimum density. The traffic is to be directed to Mountain Road, which is an arterial road intended to carry those traffic volumes, and therefore is considered to comply with the official plan. The proposed, the current zoning is development holding, as I said. They wish to have an R1E zone. The building setbacks would be the same for the new development as they are for the buildings on the east side of Marinelli Drive. There's a three-meter difference in lot frontage between these lots and those that are on the east side of Marinelli Drive. But it is the same zoning as the Terra Vita subdivision to the east, which is a much larger property and has a variety of lot sizes between 12 and 19 meters of frontage. But on average, they're about 13 meters of frontage in Terra Vita. The zoning amendment is recommended by staff for approval. The proposal does comply with provincial policies. The proposal will aid the city in meeting its 40% intensification targets. Lands are designated for residential use. The requested zoning is compatible with the established neighbourhood. And the existing implanted infrastructure can support the development. And the development will contribute to the city's short-term supply. Therefore, we recommend that the council approve the zoning bylaw amendment to an R1E zone and to allow recreation, it says for 11 lots, or up to 11 lots, which will occur through Committee of Adjustments at a later date. Those are the highlights.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovic. Upon conclusion of the planning director's comments, any members can ask questions. Do you have any questions, councillors of our Director of Planning? Yes, councillor Peter Angelo.
Thanks, Your Worship, through you to Mr. Hurlovic. On the west side, the one that is proposed for the R1C zoning, the smallest lot size is going to be 44 feet. Is that what I see on the plan?
Uh, yes, it is, I believe that's 12 meters.
And do you know the smallest lot size on the east side of the street?
They're, they're, the, they're 15 to 18 meters, I think 18 meters is on the corner lot. But otherwise, I believe they're 15 meters on the east side of Marinelli Drive.
15 is 50 feet?
Approximately 55, someone says 55.
15 meters is 55 feet? Is it?
15 is about 45.
Yeah, I thought it was about 40.
That's about 45, yeah.
15 is 50 feet? I'm just trying to get an idea of what the difference is. I mean, I know it says that the corner lots have to be 18 meters, the interior are 15 meters. But that doesn't necessarily mean that, that's the, that's the minimum. They can go larger than that if they wished. So that's why I'm trying to understand what the smallest lot size is on both sides, that's all. So I've come to 44 feet on the west side, and is it 50 feet?
It's, I've just been told it's 49.2 feet.
Okay.
According to the calculator.
Thank you.
Any other questions of council for Mr. Hurlovic? Okay, seeing none. Members of the public are advised that failure to meet, to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the local planning appeal tribunal dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone here other than the applicant who wishes to address council? I see a little bit of, yep, okay. If you can come to the microphone, please. Is there anybody else that also wishes to speak? If you just, yes, right here, and, okay. If you could just state your name and your address, please.
Yes, hi, I'm Jean Desson. 6680 Mountain Road, I've lived there for 47 years. Okay. Okay, the land in this revised application for severance and rezoning butts all my land. Mr. Hurlovic, I wonder if you could put that picture up?
I was trying to do that, but I can't do it from here, so maybe this clerk could help.
So the new homes, the rear yards of the new homes would be facing my property. At the open house on the 15th, I requested a continuation of an existing fence dividing my property from this development, sorry.
Very first slide down.
To prevent damage by construction vehicles and equipment for privacy, noise abatement, to prevent trespassing, and for safety. My request was denied by the applicants as the zoning bylaw typically, and I stress typically, does not require installation of a fence between two single-family dwellings. This development, however, is simply not just between two homes, but rather the entire length of the property, which is 722 feet. The applicants have indicated a piecemeal development with no timeframe for the three phases of construction. It could be ongoing for years. I realize new homeowners could build their own fences as the lots are sold. However, there would be no continuity, and it would be hindsight for safety and damage protection. At the November 15th meeting, the applicant stated there was a boundary discrepancy in that the stake in the southeast corner of our properties was incorrect because the stake was bent. They suggested another survey be conducted, potentially at my expense. The stakes on my property have not been tampered with in 47 years that I've lived there. I would request that council protect my interest by forcing the developer to go through due process with an alternative surveyor. I feel I should not have to become part of a development process that I am not part of, nor that I want. And I believe council has the authority to make this happen. In summary, I ask council to approve the continuation of this fence for a due process of an alternative survey prior to the onset of any construction and to have these as conditions for the approval of this application.
Thank you very much.
I have one other comment, if I may.
Yes.
At the November 15th meeting, the applicant's agent stated that, now, stated, and that, and I now read again in paragraph three of the applicant's response, quote, "We have been advised that potential development of the west side of our property, being mine, will likely be for townhouses or apartments since it is not possible to provide access for another public street off Mountain Road." So my questions are, does someone know what's going to be developed on my land that I don't? If so, where can I see these plans? And what does it have to do with this application? Perhaps Mr. Colissimo can clarify the validity of these statements when he speaks?
Thank you very much. Any councillors have any questions for Miss Desson? Oh, just one sec.
It's actually not, not for her, it's actually just through
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
On her, like, if, if
Yep.
On her request.
Yeah.
Do we have the right to make the developers on a condition to put a fence in for that whole 270? Do we have any right to do that as councillors?
Mr. Hurlovic, 722.
To the developer?
722.
Or 720, sorry.
Well, there is a partial fence there now.
The, there is a provision under the Planning Act that council could do a provisional bylaw. So that would mean that they could pass a bylaw with a requirement that they meet certain conditions. That's, I suppose, could be one of those provisions. I don't know whether council wants to start to enter into that realm or not. That would be entirely, entirely up to council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of councillor Kerrio?
The other question that Miss Desson asked about survey, do they not have to do a survey on that back lot line?
They will in order to register.
Okay. Any other questions of council? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to address council, yep, you can come forward?
Your Worship, fellow councillors.
You can state your name and your address, please.
Elizabeth Lacy, and I'm at 6624 Lucia Drive. So if you look at the map, Lucia is the street at the bottom, and I am the second lot in. Yes, yes. My lot, to address the gentleman that asked the question about lot frontages, my lot is 69.3539 feet wide. And the ones going down Marinelli are 55.77 feet. The ones proposed are 43.63. Our request is fairly simple. A subdivision plan would be more appropriate avenue to take for the rezoning of these lands under the development of the 11 proposed new homes. Or at a minimum, we request council approve R1C zoning, which is the existing zoning on Marinelli on the other side, rather than the R1E as proposed. Going through this process was new for me. I found it interesting that Peter Colosimo acted as an agent for the application as he is connected to the planning department in that he is a standing member of the Committee of Adjustments, which could be interpreted as a conflict of interest. In reviewing the report, it does not even discuss review all the items presented at the neighbourhood meeting, does not discuss review any of the residents' concerns detailed in the various letters submitted, and does not even reference the petition that I personally went round to, 100% of the houses on Marinelli and Lucia along the bottom signed, yes, they would prefer to have the existing zoning of R1C. A couple of people up around the top part of Colangelo, which is the street on the other side, one couldn't speak English, and one on four repeated visits was not present. Everybody else in that whole area signed our petition. Another example is one of the comments in the planning department's recommendation states, "There is a minor difference of three meters in the lot frontage requirements of the two zones, which would not be perceivable from the street, that it would only be perceivable from aerial." "This distance is slightly less than 10% of the lot frontage." To me, minor is not 10% of the lot frontage. And it's inconceivable how the planning department can reach that conclusion. "The new lots will be out of character with the existing development that consists of custom homes in an architecturally controlled environment." At the neighbourhood meeting, it appeared that the city had already decided on its course of action. When asked directly about the application partway through the meeting, Ann Amika stated that the city fully supports the application and that this was prior to all of the attendees having the opportunity to speak or ask questions. It seems that the city had already reached a decision without even listening to or caring about any of the residents' input. In conclusion, the residents acknowledge that homes will be built on the property, and we are fine with this. Everybody knows it needs to be developed. We respectfully request that you take the comments tonight into consideration as we would not want to see the proposed small compact lots on the west side of Marinelli Drive be contrastingly different than the existing established lots in the neighbourhood. That will significantly change its existing character. We therefore request the planning department to further assess the application in complete detail, taking the residents' concerns into consideration. We requested a minimum subdivision process or R1C zoning be required. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We've got some questions, councillor Kerrio?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm sorry, what did you say the width was of those five lots on Marinelli?
55.77, I took that from the city tax.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
And our lots on Lucia, six, there's three together, is 69.39.
Any other questions for Miss Lacy? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to address council? Okay, so I guess you're up. If you could introduce yourself.
Good evening, Your Worship, members of council. My name's Rocky Vacca, and I'm a partner at the law firm Sullivan Manny LLP. With me this evening is Jennifer Vita, who is my client's land use planner from Upper Canada Consultants. We both appear on behalf of 80460 Ontario Limited Fruit Belt Development, which is a developer of the east side of Marinelli Drive. And we also appear on behalf of Fred Costabile, who owns a home across the street from the proposed development. Our client is a developer, a well-known developer. Our client is a developer, a well-known developer, and therefore supports development of the applicant's lands, but cannot support the proposed lot sizes and lot fabric of this development. Under the new test under the Planning Act, which is less than a year old, a rezoning application cannot be approved if either, one, the proposed bylaw amendment is inconsistent with a provincial policy statement, or, two, fails to conform with the provincial plan, or, three, fails to conform with the city's official plan. You only, you don't need to prove all three. You only need to prove one to successfully oppose or appeal an application. You are going to hear from Ms. Vita in her professional opinion that the proposal fails in all three respects. Her eight-page submission dated December sixth, twenty-eighteen appears in your agenda package. It must be pointed out that planning staff's recommendation report fails to address the letter and fails to specifically address the arguments set out in the letter. A great deal of time and expense was incurred by our client in engaging Ms. Vita to prepare this report before a public meeting was even scheduled, in the hope that our appearance in opposition tonight would not be necessary. But unfortunately, our appearance is necessary because little to no attention was paid to that letter. If the proposal were to match the R1C zoning on the currently developed side of Marinelli Drive with lot sizes of at least fifteen metres, or fifty feet, even though the lot frontages of the existing homes on Marinelli are just under fifty-six feet, or seventeen metres, and in many cases, much greater, and the development were to proceed by plan of subdivision and not through a series of ten severances, then our client could support the proposal. What we're seeking is a compromise. We're not asking them to match our frontages of fifty-six feet, or sixty-three feet, or sixty-nine feet. We just want them to match our zoning, which is R1C. If they match our zoning, they have to have a minimum of fifty feet. That's all we're asking for. It's interesting to note that at the pre-consultation meeting attended by the applicant's planner and by city and regional officials, the applicant was told they had to apply for a plan of subdivision approval. It was checked off by the city on the form given to the applicant. I'm going to ask Ms. Vita to hand out copies of that form, which was provided to the applicant after the pre-consultation meeting. I just want you to focus on the big red circle on the second page. So a pre-consultation meeting for rezonings under the Planning Act is mandatory. They're put in place so that the developer and their agent sits down with planning staff, regional officials, fire department, municipal works, engineering, everyone's at that meeting. So the developer applicant has a good understanding of what they need to do to proceed with their application. And when you walk out of that meeting, or shortly thereafter, you're provided with this report, and it tells you what you must do. Well, after that meeting, the applicant was told they must apply for plan of subdivision So I find it peculiar that planning staff is now saying it's okay to proceed by way of a series of ten severances in a phased approach, when your official plan says otherwise, and you're going to hear Ms. Vita mention that, and the pre-consultation report provided to the applicant way back in April of last year clearly states the applicant would have to proceed by plan of subdivision rather than a series of ten severances. You're going to hear Ms. Vita mention the concepts of compatibility and character of the neighbourhood throughout her presentation. The question is whether lots that are forty-three feet wide are compatible and fit in with existing high-end homes on lots that are fifty-six feet and wider, on much deeper lots than what's proposed, directly across the street. That's the important point. This proposal is directly across the street. If it was in the backyards of the existing homes of Marinelli, there's planning policies that allow, allow for that, that discuss gradation and density, which you're going to hear from Ms. Vita. But when you're directly across the street, and there's that much of a difference in these lots, it's concerning. The only reason given by the applicant that we're aware as to why they do not want to be in the R1C zone and have at the very least fifty-foot or fifteen-meter-wide lots is because they will lose three lots. Is the loss of lots a reason to favor a developer on an infill project over the wishes of, over the wishes of an established neighbourhood? We say no. The reality is that the existing residents of Marinelli Drive cannot shrink their homes. They cannot reduce their front yard area and driveways. They cannot go from two-car garages to something less to match what the developer is asking you to approve, and which will be built on these lots if approved. However, on the other hand, it is the developer, and only the developer, who has the opportunity to fit within the established character of the neighbourhood and be compatible with the homes across the street, by at the very least making their infill lots fifty feet wide, as required by the R1C zone. Respectfully, the loss of lots is not a valid reason not to have your project fit within the existing character of a neighbourhood. More importantly, the loss of lots does not equate to a loss of sales revenue. The fact of the matter is that lots are sold by the linear foot of frontage. So whether you have eleven lots, or nine lots, or eight lots, the sales revenue will be the same. For example, these lots presumably will sell for at least four thousand dollars per linear foot of frontage. If there's a total of five hundred feet of frontage, then the sales will be over two-point-two million dollars, whether there's eleven lots, nine lots, or eight lots. Obviously, it goes without saying that these will not be lots accommodating affordable housing, given the prices. Arguably, a larger lot size, as we are suggesting, will result in a double benefit to the developer. The larger lots will sell at a premium, because there are so few lots, if any lots, that are private, that are fifty-foot in frontage available on the north end. And it costs more than ten thousand dollars per lot to service each lot with sewer laterals and utility connections. Therefore, each less lot created by the developer, developer will result in savings of ten thousand dollars per lot not created. This could easily be a win-win for the neighbourhood and for the developer, if the developer revises their proposal, as we are suggesting, by creating lots at fifteen metres or fifty feet in width as a bare minimum. Finally, you will note that the region is, one, not requesting that a holding zone be put on the property until the clearance letter is received from the ministry on the archaeological assessment, and, two, is not requesting that a holding zone be put on the property until a record of site condition is filed and approved by the MOE. And, in fact, is suggesting that one may not even be necessary, even though there's been a long history of pesticide use in the past on this former orchard and possible soil contamination. The region's position is totally inconsistent with their approach in all other developments I've been involved with, and as far as I'm aware, Ms. Vita agrees. It's inconsistent with the approach the applicant's planner, Mr. Colosimo, consistently took when he was a planner at the region before his retirement, and he did a great job at the region. If approval is granted as applied for, or as may be amended as we've requested, a holding zone ought to be put on the, ought to be put on the property until the record of site condition is issued by the MOE and the ministry issues a clearance letter on the archaeological assessment. Also, we believe council should direct staff this evening, whether this application is denied, approved, or deferred, I'm asking that council direct staff this evening that this development must proceed by way of plan, plan of subdivision, and not by a series of ten severances as proposed by the applicant. This was the direction clearly given at the pre-consultation meeting on April eighteenth, twenty-eighteen, and more importantly, as required by your official plan. Finally, I heard Ms. Desson this evening mention a possible dispute regarding property boundaries. If this development proceeds by plan of subdivision, then the property boundary issues must be resolved and determined before the development can proceed to subdivision registration, and I agree with Mr. Hurlovich on that point. However, if this development proceeds by severance, then the applicant does not necessarily need to deal with this issue. To register severed lots, you don't have to have your property in what's called land titles absolute. This property right now is not in land titles absolute. To get a property into land titles absolute, you have to have a surveyor prepare a plan, give notice to each abutting landowner, and every owner has the right to object if there's a property dispute, and it proceeds to a hearing. That doesn't apply in a severance. You don't have to be in land titles absolute. You can get your severance, you can go ahead and register your lot, you can sell your lot, and it's up to the innocent neighbour to spend money to fight you on that. The boundaries will remain in doubt, and Ms. Desson will have to incur great expense to push the issue to resolution if you allow this development to proceed by way of severance. That would be an unfair burden on any ratepayer, and in this case, Ms. Desson, and would be caused by a failure by the city to insist upon compliance with your official plan. I'll pass it on to Ms. Vita.
Any questions for Mr. Vaca of council before Ms. Vita steps up? Okay, welcome.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. My name is Jennifer Vita from Upper Canada Consultants, and the address is two-sixty-one Martin Del Row. I'm a registered professional planner here on behalf of eight-hundred-four-sixty Ontario Limited, also known as Fruit Belt Development. I am here tonight to speak to the application for zoning bylaw amendments submitted by Brian and Emily Weatherall for the property at sixty-six-six-six Mount Road. I also submitted a letter to the clerk's office on December sixth, twenty-eighteen, which I understand would have been circulated to you as part of the application process. The zoning application before you this evening is an application to rezone the lands known as six-six-six-six Mountain Road. The application seeks to rezone the entire property to permit compact, single-detached lots fronting onto Marinelli and Lucia Drive. This view that you see on the screen, looking north along Marinelli, of the subject lands, the lands on the left-hand side of the screen show the subject lands as open space, where nine compact, single lots with frontages of forty-two feet are proposed. The area on the right shows the existing established neighbourhood with seven large custom homes with frontages of fifty-six feet. The existing character of the neighbourhood consists of large, single-detached dwellings with double-car garages, generous lot sizes providing for large lot frontages, large lot front yards, and generous side yards creating a sense of openness. New development should be compatible and respect the existing physical character of the neighbourhood. In November twenty-eighteen, my client received a notice of open house from the city of Niagara Falls. The proposal in the notice indicated that a zoning amendment is requested to facilitate the future severance of ten parcels for single dwellings and the creation of a public road. The zoning application was seeking to rezone the lands from a development holding zone to a site-specific R1E zone with a specific provision to reduce minimum lot areas. The plan included in the, in this notice is shown on the screen. The plan shows how the lands would be divided up into parts, including the existing lot fronting on Mountain Road, ten single-detached lots, and a future public road extension of Lucia Drive. However, the zoning that is applied for would actually permit the lands to be divided up into twelve new lots and one existing lot, which is not consistent with the information in the public notice. The scale of development that would be permitted by the proposed zoning amendment is much larger than what is illustrated in the submitted plan and described in the public notice. The scale of development that would be permitted by the proposed zoning amendment is not compatible with the existing neighbourhood context, and will leave the city with little to no control over the phasing of this development in the future. It is also noted that the creation of the new lots will proceed through committee of adjustment consent applications, rather than through a comprehensive subdivision review and approval process, which would ensure the city and the public interests are both protected. The scale and density of the proposed amendment is concerning to my client and several other neighbours in the community, as you've heard. I attended the information meeting for this proposal on November fifteenth, twenty-eighteen, to gain a better understanding of the proposal, and I submitted a letter in December outlining concerns with the proposal. The concerns in my letter include a lack of a detailed review process to create the new lots, and an attempt to avoid a comprehensive subdivision process as required by the city's official plan. The application does not conform to the official plan policies, indicating that development shall primarily proceed through a plan of subdivision. The proposed lot sizes are not compatible with the existing character of the street, and there is no transition or gradation from the larger custom homes proposed in the application to the higher-density lots that are proposed. My client recently received a notice, a public notice for tonight's meeting. The notice included some changes to the application. The revised application is seeking the same zoning, without the reduction for lot area and a reduction of one lot on Lucia Drive. But the new application indicates that the plan is to be phased. The first phase now consists of six lots on Marinelli, as you see above, parts one to six, with later phases to create the additional five lots and a public road extension. All of these new lots are again proposed to be created through a committee of adjustment approval rather than a comprehensive subdivision approval process, which will not allow council input on the approval. The changes to the plan do not address any of the concerns that were raised at the information meeting or concerns outlined in my letter, which is quite surprising. I believe the changes that they have made to the application are proposed to make the application appear more minor than it actually is, and it is an attempt to avoid a proper comprehensive approvals process. Phasing the plan into small pieces does not minimise the impact of this development, as ultimately, the zoning that is proposed will permit the development of eleven new lots. Whether that happens in one phase or three phases, the ultimate impact is the same. How does council intend to ensure that the plan is phased, as outlined in this notice? There is no comment on this in the staff report, and in my experience, there is no control mechanism that would ensure this. It is surprising that the owners wish to phase this development, as it would require digging up Marinelli Road, installing laterals, reinstating the road and curbs and boulevards multiple times as the phases move forward, which is simply not efficient development. I have worked for land developers for many years, and lots are sold on a cost per foot front, of frontage, as Rocky had mentioned earlier. There is no loss in revenue if council wishes to reduce the number of lots in this development, as the length of frontage is the same. Therefore, the revenues will be the same with eleven lots or eight lots. Scaling back density will also lead to cost savings for the developer, as mentioned by Rocky as well. And I have a few questions for council to consider when making a decision on this application. How will council ensure the proposed phasing is implemented? And how will council ensure that Marinelli Road will be fully reinstated to city standards after the lots are serviced in multiple phases? And how will council ensure that the boundary issue with the resident to the west is addressed adequately and protect the public interest? And how will council ensure that the public road extension on Lucia Drive is done to city standards and proper warranties are in place, like they would be in a plan of subdivision? And lastly, how will council ensure that the lands are cleaned up and that a record of site conditions is obtained prior to development proceeding in absence of a subdivision agreement? It is my professional opinion that the proposed zoning plan is not compatible with the existing context of the neighbourhood, and it will have a negative impact on the established character. The proposed zoning will permit lots that are fourteen feet narrower, narrower, narrower than what exists across the street, as you see in the plan above. The proposed zoning will not allow for full two-car garages and large green spaces in front of the houses, which contradicts the existing character of the neighbourhood. The zoning will not allow large setbacks between houses, which will negatively impact the existing open character of the neighbourhood. No transition or gradation in the density provided between the lower-density dwellings and the higher-density dwellings is proposed. There is clear avoidance of a detailed review process to create the new lots and road, which leaves council out of the process and residents to deal with issues themselves. The application does not conform to the official plan policies, indicating that development shall primarily proceed through a plan of subdivision. The proposal fails to address a number of the city's official plan policies in terms of compatibility and transition, and there is no temporary turnaround that will be provided at the dead end of Lucia Drive, which is atypical to what has been the standard in development across the region. How will snow removal vehicles turn around, emergency vehicles, and where will snow be stored, on the neighbour's private property? How is this development special, that they are not subject to the same requirements as every other developer in the city? There are outstanding archaeological clearances on the site, as outlined in the regional comments. There are also outstanding soil contamination potential on the site. There are also outstanding soil contamination potential on the site, as outlined in the regional comments. To me, all of these important outstanding issues should be addressed through a proper comprehensive subdivision process. Let's not leave these issues to be dealt with by committee of adjustment. If the R1E zoning is approved tonight, there is no mechanism for staff or council to control how the development is phased. How many units are in each phase? If the land gets flipped to another developer or builder, or what the quality of the building will be? I think it is important for council to be aware that the application for zoning does not afford the city control over the phasing, as it is suggested in the public notice. I believe that the proposal, even as revised, has not addressed the concerns outlined in my December letter or any of the other concerns raised at the information meeting by the residents. If council approves this development with less lots in the same zoning category as the lots across the street and the city requires the development to be subject to a fulsome subdivision review process, it will ensure the protection of the city and residents' interests and provide for a compatible development that will not result in revenue losses for the owners. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Yes, councillor Ianoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Hirlovich. The speaker says numerous times that the concerns that they had put in their letter were not addressed in the application. And then, then, as I had already indicated at the beginning, you had a list, a series of questions. So maybe they could let us know why those concerns were not incorporated into the report and then answer the questions that she had.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hirlovich?
Well, I believe that the reasons between what was originally shown and what is currently shown, the six lots versus the eleven lots, was an attempt by the developer to address those concerns. The, Mr. Vaca had previously said that one of the reasons for appeal that the document had to conform with the official plan. Ms. Vita referenced primarily by subdivision. I believe that's probably the item that she thinks is not in compliance, but primarily doesn't mean exclusively. The official plan also provides for lots to be created by consent on an existing road. And I believe, again, that the developer can explain himself that that's the reason that they chose not to proceed with the lots on Lucia because it's not an existing road. So, he can explain that. With respect to the size of the lots, I already pointed out to council that the minimum lot area, or minimum density by the OP is twenty units per hectare. At R1E standards, they're achieving just slightly over twenty point, twenty units per hectare. So if we were to use an R1C density, they would actually have less than twenty units per hectare. I had my planner work that out and it would come out to almost seventeen units per hectare. So therefore, an R1C zone would not meet the city's requirement and therefore would not be in compliance with the official plan. So we did look at a number of the things that the speaker says we didn't address.
Thank you for that, councillor. Do you have any subsequent? Okay. Councillor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. And through you to Mr. Hirlovich, just wondering if you can address the plan of subdivision, I guess, contention. I understand that they would have come in for a pre-consultation and we're looking at doing full balance of the lands. That perhaps a subdivision approval would have been required. Is that the reason why now it's not? And is there a threshold before a plan of subdivision gets imposed on someone?
Mr. Hirlovich?
There is, there is no threshold with respect to whether the plan of subdivision. I'm not sure why the change of position. I'd like to be able to say, oh, it's because of reason X. However, I don't have that.
Anything else you didn't address? Councillor Carey?
To Mr. Hirlovich, do we have any other situations in the city where zoning is different on one side of the street than the other? This is, will this be the first? Do we have anything like this anywhere else that we've approved?
There are probably lots of areas around the city with one zoning on one side of the street.
Facing each other?
Yes.
Who is?
Yes. We often use the centerlines of roads as the zone boundary between one zone on one side of the street and a zone on the other side of the street. Probably not so much in a brand-new developing area, but we do have them.
Any other questions of council? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just jump in for one second. Committee of adjustment, decision by committee of adjustment, is not a decision by the elected representatives of the city. So if this goes to committee of adjustment, you'll have Mr. Peter Angelo on the committee. He's the only elected person. You'll have four unelected persons, one of which is going to have to declare a conflict of interest, being Mr. Colosimo. So, I'm not comfortable with a committee of adjustment of unelected representatives deciding the fate of this neighborhood, given everything you've heard. That's why I'm here. My client's a developer. He is trying to put forward a compromise. He's not asking for lots that are fifty-six feet, at the very least. He's asking for fifty, the R1C zone. Nothing more, nothing less. They've come forward with forty-three, forty-four, we're at fifty-six. Meet us down the middle, we're at fifty. That's all we're asking for. But that's a decision that this council should be making, not the committee of adjustment, with all due respect. Also, we're strongly recommending that any future rezoning must have a holding zone placed on the property until clearance of the archaeological assessment and record of site condition is filed. You do this all the time. I can't think of another application where these same, these same issues didn't exist and an H wasn't put on the zoning. So I don't know what makes this different. We've said it many times, we're insisting that this proceed by way of plan of subdivision. You'll have conditions of draft plan approval that have to be met. You'll have a process where the developer has to bring the property into land titles absolute and clear any possible boundary issues with their neighbors. That does not exist through severances through committee of adjustment. And really, do you expect us to believe that they're going to tear up the street and put six lots in the middle and then tear it up again and put three lots towards Lucia and then tear it up again and put two lots towards Marinelli Drive? They're going to tear it up, rebuild it, tear it up, rebuild it? I don't see it happening. So my client has asked me to make it clear that I've already been instructed to appeal council's decision, should the application be approved this evening as submitted. This will only add unnecessary additional expense to the applicant, to the city, and will substantially and unnecessarily delay this development. Not what my client wants. My client is a developer. He doesn't want to have another developer incur additional cost and lose time. But, in this case, he has to take that approach. Quite frankly, what's proposed does not fit the character of the neighborhood. You can't look across the street and look at houses that are fourteen feet smaller in width. It's just not right. So we're proposing a compromise. Meet us halfway. R1C zoning, which is what is existing on the current developed Marinelli side of the street, minimum fifty lot frontages. We're not going to get into the fact that these lots are not as deep as what's on Marinelli. The houses aren't going to be as big. So be it. But I think it's fair for the current residents of Marinelli to look across the street and see a minimum two-car garage, for crying out loud. Impossible to do with forty-four lot, forty-four wide lot unless you're going to have two garages and a front door. Nobody wants that. So, those are my submissions, subject to any questions you may have.
Mr. Hirlovich, is there any comment on the H? Just to get an answer, why we didn't use an H in this case, holding?
That would be a request that comes from the region on behalf of the province. So, he's referring to a record of site condition or archaeological study. So normally, the region would ask us to place that into the zoning. They did not.
Okay, understand. Do we have any questions of council? Councillor Towns?
Yes, I really am puzzled with this situation. Why the applicant wouldn't be listening to some of the comments that you're making? Financially, it's probably not going to make any difference one way or the other. And I've heard from all the people up and down Marinelli, several of them, and they have a beautiful area there. They're looking at green space across the road. But to have that split up into small lots and take away from the beauty and grandeur of the area, in my opinion, is rather ridiculous. And I certainly am not going to support that. I'm also happy that it's going to be necessary for a proper survey to look after the concerns that property owners have. And to compare this with TerraVita, that's a totally different situation. Down the road, they're all the same in that particular area. And why you would not do this by plan of subdivision is really a concern. So my question really is, when we get to the opportunity to make sure that we have a motion with respect to this, can you tell me what we do, Mr. Hirlovich? Do we just turn it down? Or do we try to make a compromise if they're willing to? I don't think the opportunity is available tonight to do that. How are we going to handle this?
Mr. Hirlovich?
I guess I was going through those same kind of questions in my own mind and I wondered whether or not the developer would wish to ask that this application be deferred and allow him to, to further speak with his client, but I leave that up to him.
Okay, well, we'll deal with that at the appropriate time, but I just didn't know which way to go. You just turn it down, defer it, or you try to work with the applicant?
Okay, any other questions of council? Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here, other than the applicant, who wishes to address council? Okay, seeing none, council will now hear from the applicant and his or her representatives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have a presentation on cue, I hope. I'll just kind of guide you through it if I can. My name's Peter Colosimo. I'm the agent for the applicants, Emily and Brian Weatherall. A lot of new information has been presented tonight and some of it misleading. We certainly wanted to address the neighborhood concerns. Certainly an issue of mine is acting as consultant, certainly the Weatheralls as the owners. There's a lot of things put forward. I think one of the things I want to address right off the bat is really about this process business. We've applied for a zoning bylaw amendment. We haven't applied for a subdivision or severances. We were told to deal with the zoning issue first to get the land use in order, the regulations for these lands. We went through pre-consultation. I understand that the pre-consultation notice was circulated to all of you through Mr. Vaca. Again, that's somewhat misleading. It doesn't reflect what happened at the pre-consultation meeting or what we requested. We requested, could we go through consents? As a member of the committee of adjustment for the city myself, I am not handling the consents at all. Conflict of interest there, I'm only dealing with the zoning to help these folks out to get their land use in shape. That being said, when we went for pre-consultation, we asked, could we sever? Because instead of subdivision, it's an existing road, fully serviced. In fact, we were told that the Weatheralls are going to have to pay for half of those services. The servicing for these lands was already considered, as well as things like stormwater management and so on. Other planning things were considered through the subdivision and so on. Severances can deal with that. We're not dealing with significant infrastructure at all. We changed our plan to not extend the road at all, even though the city has, through consents, extended roads of one hundred and twenty feet, even more, for just a handful of lots. So the policy is not that strict. It reflects the fact that you do have to go through a fulsome planning review. All agencies and departments are circulated through zoning. They're also circulated, again, through consent, even if you go through a subdivision. What's misleading on the pre-consultation checklist you have, if you notice, I didn't sign it in the end. That's important, certainly from even a legal perspective, because we have pre-consultation. We sign off if we're in agreement. We weren't in agreement because our discussion was not about a plan of subdivision. We went to the meeting and talked about consents. We were told that would be fine. You're going to need a development agreement approved by council. There'll be other requirements in terms of lot grading drainage. The road might need some memory approvals, but it's only a hundred and ten feet or so. The city's interests can be protected, the regional interests could be protected through the consent process and, of course, the zoning. But we were told that we have to go through the zoning first. So through emails, correspondence after that, it was agreed that, yes, that was the context of the meeting. We didn't require certain things, the region didn't. We followed through the process, submitted a complete application for the zoning bylaw amendment. So that being said, in terms of council's control over this, if we go through consent, again, you're dealing with the existing infrastructure. We've changed our plan. We're not extending a road at all. You have a development agreement if necessary. Staff feels that we have to, to put in individual services, reinstate the road. All those costs are the developer's costs, cash and lieu for parkland, everything from the archaeological, the reason why there's not a holding zone being requested from the region. Given my experience with the region, even at the CDC and Catherine's, we did the archaeological assessment. Nothing was found. All the region wants is a clearance letter from the ministry. We have to have that done before the lots can be not just created, but cleared. You have a year to fulfill conditions. Likewise, with the environmental issue for record of site condition, that was a new one on us. It didn't come out through pre-consultation. That came out when the application was circulated. I questioned it because there was not an orchard on this property dating back to the seventies. There was never an orchard on this property. There was on the Marinelli lands, but not on this property. The region looked back to the nineteen fifties and found a cluster of about twenty-eight trees, soon to be an orchard, and said, we've got to ask you to do something. So that's why their comments are such that it says, get a letter from consultant or do the study to validate, is there an issue? And there wasn't an issue, by the way, across the row on Marinelli Estates, even though they had pretty much an active orchard over there. There is no issue in terms of contamination. So we're pretty confident that we've covered a lot of things through the zoning process to get all the feedback from different departments and agencies. We know what the next step through consent will be. It's actually been discussed here tonight, a number of these things, in terms of what has to be done through the consent process. Subdivision, more costly process, somewhat more onus, but again, you're dealing with an existing road. So I just want to clarify my role, that it's for zoning. I'm not handling any kind of severances for this application. It's strictly for the zoning and this is an appropriate process. As well, I should mention, is a one for reserve along all of Marinelli Drive. That one for reserve has to be lifted by council. They can't do anything, even if they come in for severances, unless council lifts that one for reserve. So that's important to note. So that's sort of the process and that's why I feel like a holding zone isn't even applicable because we've got to deal with these things through consent and we can't create the lot until we fulfill any conditions that come out through that process. Just the next slide, please. So what we were trying to do tonight was really to address how we dealt with neighborhood issues that we knew about through the open house back in November. So what we knew at that time was, on the Westerly side, we had issues with a fence and trees, as Ms. Desson has pointed out. This is a picture taken from the back of the Weatherall property, showing, they've already constructed a fence almost three hundred feet long at their expense. Trees shouldn't be an issue. They're set back about twenty feet. Certainly appropriate to keep those trees. They're an amenity for this site, future development and so on, and there is no impact really on the Desson property. As far as any survey issues, somewhat news to us, it's an issue maybe that Ms. Desson's raised, but my clients have already gone to the expense of the survey to validate their property line. They put on this fence at their considerable expense and they're quite confident through that, that the property boundaries have been specifically measured and appropriate. So, some of the main issues that the neighbors had mentioned through a petition, where the lot sizes being too small, high-density property values, and they requested the R1C zone that would result in a loss of three lots. Next slide, please. So, in preparing our future development plan, I should say that the zoning process that we had to go through is a lot more detailed than what the city would do if it updated its zoning bylaw that's forty years old. The city could have zoned this property R1E. It would certainly fit because the development holding zone that's applicable right now already includes R1E provisions to build a home. a home. So if the city's owned this property, they wouldn't be doing an archaeological assessment. They wouldn't be doing any kind of record of site condition or anything. That would come out through the next steps. My clients have spent the money to get the requisite studies done. They will through the next step of the process, and certainly a detailed process through zoning that's gone on already, and will be duplicated when they go through consent process. So what we did was, we prepared a demonstration plan with the R1E zoning in mind. That demonstration plan was really to show how potential lots could be created through future consents. We wanted to demonstrate not just that we could meet the bylaw, we'd exceed the bylaw, because R1E zoning, yes, they can be small lots. I believe it's somewhere in the order of 370 square meters, just under 4,000 square feet, up to about 5,000 square feet. Well, that's what we're trying to achieve, the largest we could under the R1E, but knowing that we couldn't meet the frontage for an R1D zone. We eliminated one lot from the original proposal. That was to address area concerns. They were concerned about too many lots. The ultimate build-out would have been 12. We put it down to 11 at the south end. We reduced one lot. So we're looking at 11 lots maximum in the long term. The approximate area of the lots that we're proposing are between 5,000 to 5,900 square feet, with frontages nearly 44 feet, up to 60 feet. So the other thing we wanted to mention, that through regional comments, no future road is allowed to the west off of Mountain Road. And in the lands behind my client's property, can't be developed for single-detached dwellings. It'll have to be some form of medium-density, multiple-family type of accommodations. Next slide, please. So just to go over our future development plan, that's in the planning staff report. By the way, I didn't mention in the beginning, we fully support the planning report. Get to that later, maybe. But this plan shows how we've revised the original submission, and that was to address resident concerns. At the top of the plan, you'll see sort of an L-shaped parcel. That's my client's existing home. There's potential for two lots at the rear in the long term. My clients do not want to create those lots at this time. They still want to enjoy that benefit of their property to keep a sort of a rural feel. We mentioned that at the information meeting. It got residents upset, showing some dashed lines. You're seeing there could be two lots in the long term. The point to make is that they have no intention of creating those lots in the near future. What they would like to do, and again, based on comments from various people at the public meeting, was create six lots in the near future through consent. The six lots that you see there are all just shy of 44 feet in frontage, and the square footage of those lots is just over 5,000 square feet. These are not small lots. Just to the south of the six lots, you'll see sort of a parcel there where we've got three future lots. That's part of our change. The two lots at the bottom near the Hollidge Road, we did have three lots proposed there. We reduced it to two lots, because those were the smallest lots that we would have been proposing under the R1E zoning. But given comments from the region about waste management pickup, turnaround, even switching to two lots, and whether it's marketable to build a road 120 feet and only sell a couple of lots off of it, my clients do not want to develop that under their property at this time, nor the corner lot there that you see for the future. So it'd be appropriate to leave that inside of any consent at this time, but keep it zoned for future development. And again, there's a one-foot reserve, so nothing can happen over there. To the west, again, as I mentioned, you can see a little bit of the property lines, Ms. Dessin's property, as well as property to the west. Those lands, again, somewhat landlocked. At best, the road that we show at the bottom would be a cul-de-sac, but you can't get lots towards Mountain Road. That will be some form of multiple housing. Next slide, please. This just tries to give a bit of the neighborhood context, because when you're looking at planning matters, you have to look at the neighborhood, not just one side of the street. Certainly, the east side of Marinelli is something to consider. It's important with the entire neighborhood. You can see the Calagiro Estates to the north. Those lots are about half an acre, 100 by 200 roughly. Those are the largest lots, but even they have townhouses, street townhouses abutting them, somewhat below the ground level. But if you get up to Rock Cliff Crescent further north, there's townhouses right next door, quite compatible, different use, but again, they coexist. South of Mountain Road, you can see my client's lands in yellow, Marinelli Drive, the west side there. One thing that was missing, I think, in one of the residents' petitions was lot areas along Colangelo, which are smaller than Marinelli Drive as well. The other thing to point out there is the Terra Vida plan to the east of Colangelo Drive. Next slide, please. This also reflects what's gone on in the neighborhood. Council approved this plan in the last couple of years. Much smaller lots. These lots typically are about 39.4 feet. That's your 12 meters, and they're just, some of them are just shy of 4,000 square feet. Some are right directly adjacent to 50-foot lots on Colangelo. Another thing to keep in mind is the front yard. They also got to reduce front yard down to 4.5 meters, different than what's in the area right now. So to point out as well, on the south side of Colangelo Drive by the Hollidge Road, they did come back to council, I believe, last year to create larger lots. And they went from 80 lots in total to, sorry, 82 lots down to 80 to create larger lots. All of those lots that they created that are larger, most of them are smaller than ones we're proposing. They're not quite 5,000 square feet. The only ones that are are the ones that are pie-shaped because of curve on the road. So that's an important consideration in terms of the nature of the neighborhood. Again, zoning-wise, having 50-foot lots next to 39-foot lots, whether you're backing onto the lots or across the street from Calagiro, where these are 4,000-square-foot lots across from Calagiro, it's a separation distance that counts in the end, and that's important when you consider our development. Next slide, please. So just to give a better sense of Marinelli Drive, and I apologize my big thumb there on the edge of the picture, not to distort the height of buildings. You can see that there is a large home. There's a couple of large homes on Marinelli Drive, also smaller bungalows. So it's not one size fits all, so to speak. They may be larger lots, but the home sizes vary, and some are actually smaller. Next slide, please. This is also facing Marinelli Drive, facing north. Again, you can see two-story bungalow in between, and to the north is a couple of bungalows as well. So the lot, lot sizes slightly bigger, home sizes certainly vary quite a bit. Next slide, please. This is Lucia Drive, facing east. And again, we've got two-story, and we've got bungalows on the south side, similar to the other side of Colangelo as well. And then continuing on, there will be smaller lots for the Terra Vida subdivision approved by council. Next slide, please. Official plan conformity. This is something that's important with the zoning bylaw in particular, even if we're dealing with consents or a subdivision. The official plan conformity, one thing is the designation. It's residential, pretty wide-ranging in terms of permitted uses. This is also a built-up area. It's a priority for the city for development. Built-up area typically means you've got services and roads in place. You want to make better use of that infrastructure. The permitted uses on local roads are generally singles, semis, or townhouses. We could have went with townhouses, I guess, but the most compatible use is single-detached dwellings, so that's the way we went ahead. So in terms of the appropriate land use and zone, single-detached is certainly consistent, not just across the road, but also to the east. Terra Vida and even Colangelo Estates, even Calagiro for that matter, most of that is already singles, except in the Walker development next door. The current development holding zone already includes R1E regulations. Sort of gave us a base point to go from, but we didn't want to go with just the minimum provisions in the bylaw. We've demonstrated that our lots exceed that quite a bit. Future development, where we may to exceed those minimum R1E requirements. Compatibility, this is something that comes into play when you're looking across the street or even in the neighborhood, because it's important to consider the neighbor, neighbors beyond even Marinelli, because it's looked at on a neighborhood basis. So, but when you look at compatibility, it doesn't mean that development has to be exactly the same, lot sizes, frontage, whatever. It means that they can coexist without any adverse effects, and we're confident that this development can go forward without any adverse effects on residents. The lot areas, setbacks, lot coverage, building height will permit comparable building sizes for new homes on these lots. They may be narrower, but given the lot areas we've got that are up 5,000 square feet or plus, you could get 2,000 square feet for a bungalow with a double-car garage, and you could get even more than that for two stories. You could have a 3,000-square-foot home. Yes, it'll be a little bit narrower, but a garage is 20 feet wide typically, and we've got about 35 to 36 feet to work with. You could have 16 feet of living space beside the garage. So we can get a home that's more than comfortable, more than average. All planning policies, provincial, regional, and city policies, they all encourage varying lot sizes, as well as unit sizes. It's a common planning principle throughout, particularly the city's official plan, which even encourages smaller lot sizes. But I'm not saying these are small lots. They may be smaller than across the street, but they're larger than a lot of other lots that have been approved in this area, particularly Terra Vida. Density, important consideration in terms of making use of your infrastructure, providing, you know, maybe more affordable or alternative types of housing. This is a policy in the city's plan anticipates that in a built-up area, there will be higher densities, and that they also promote a gradation of densities in neighborhoods. Our development is low-density. We're not high-density. I wouldn't even call it higher than density compared to what's across the street. This is at the low end. We're 20.75 units per hectare, as city staff has determined. That's at the low end of the minimum official plan requirement of 20 to 40 units per hectare. We're low-density. If we lose any more lots, we're not going to meet the official plan. Another consideration when you're looking at this area is what's going to happen to the west? We've got a public meeting for my client's lands, the republic meetings for all the developments down the line, maybe some controversy. The next controversy you can expect somewhere down the road, maybe not this council, is future development for medium-density, because you can't get a road behind my client's lands. Those lots are extremely deep, and they're going to be townhouses, maybe apartments. Townhouses would be the best, but long story short, you're going to have medium-density. It's appropriate to have lots that meet the city's official plan from a density perspective, provide some variety in the area, and that's why our development is certainly appropriate. It makes more efficient use of land and infrastructure. Certainly, it's an underutilized property now. R1 zoning is going to result in a loss of three lots. We said we're willing to give up one. It's still a cost-effective development the way we're doing it. It certainly wouldn't be if you're going to lose three lots in total. Affordable housing, not something that we're anticipating providing here. It's not affordable housing, but the policies do ask the city to consider that when you're looking at a rezoning. The only thing I can say here is they'd be more affordable lots versus 50-foot lots or greater. So there'll be more affordable lots for that purpose, but certainly not affordable housing in terms of accommodating other residents in the community. So in conclusion, certainly, as I said earlier, we support the staff recommendation. It's been supported by the region, supported by the city staff. It meets all applicable tests under provincial, regional, and city policies and plans. We've certainly tried our best to address neighborhood issues to this point, and we'd certainly hope that council would support our application for zoning amendment.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of council for Mr. Colosimo? Any comments from you, Mr. Hurlovich, or questions? No? Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Dessin, we've already heard from that part of the meeting, so we're moving, I'm going to be closing the public meeting now.
Well, I wanted to speak as well.
What's that? Oh, okay, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're part of the group presenting, yeah?
My name is Derek Weatherall. I live at 9 Allendale Drive. I'm here to represent my parents today, who live at 666 Mountain Road. They're away, so they can't be here to speak. This is the house I grew up in, and I wanted to address some of the things that you heard tonight, as far as the letter from Mrs. Dessin, the Lacy's petition, and the report by Mrs. Vita. With regards to any boundary disputes that you've heard over and over and over again tonight, there is no boundary dispute. My parents hired Matthews Cameron to come out. They surveyed that lot line from Mountain Road all the way to the Hollidge Road. They put in stakes every 20 feet, and my parents had a fence company come in and build a fence that goes beyond her house, beyond her garden, and back to the unkept bush in the back of her property. So the only dispute is if she doesn't believe that the surveyors have done their job. I mean, she's had more than two years to hire another surveyor to, you know, verify that if she wants, but I mean, this is what these people do for a living, so there really is no property dispute that you keep hearing about. She talked about, you know, houses shading her garden and whatnot. I mean, you've seen from the pictures, there's 50-foot tall trees going all the way down the property. Nothing's going to make more shade than those things have. They've been there for 40, 40-something years, so I don't see that as an issue. The next thing I wanted to talk about was the petition by the Lacy's. They stated it was misleading that the first two lots were not included in this application. Nothing could be further from the truth. The reason why those weren't included is because my parents and my sister, who lives next door to them, both live there. Those two lots are going to be their backyard for as long as they live in those houses. So there's no interest whatsoever in developing those lots. That's the way they're going to stay. That's their backyard. They don't want houses any closer than that. The only reason they're on there is they're just showing that, you know, there is enough space in the future to make two lots, but it is not their intention, as long as they live, to turn those into lots. This petition, it does have a bunch of errors regarding coverage and conformity, and although there are 30 signatures on it, there's actually only six homes that front on Marinelli Drive. The rest of the homes are all inside the subdivision, so they would be no more affected by this development of my parents than they would be affected by the lots in Terra Vida, which is on the opposite side of them. It's no further away. They don't look at them. There's no difference at all. So really, there's only six signatures that matter on that thing that they passed out. Lastly, it's the report that Ms. Vita did. There's two things that are kind of odd. One is this report has been solicited by the former developer, who doesn't live in the neighborhood. I mean, his daughter lives there, but he doesn't live anywhere close to this place, and he's the one footing the bill for the lawyers and everything else. And the other thing is that this, her report contradicts everything that your planning department says. This is their job, they're professionals, and yet she contradicts everything that they've said about this report, and yet she represented Terra Vida to get 39-foot lots put on the other side. So it doesn't make sense that, you know, it was fine for her to represent them for 39-foot lots, and yet these 44-foot lots are all of a sudden too small. It's because that's what she's getting paid to say here. I understand that these neighbors would like to see fewer houses as possible across the street from them. That's normal. It's what everybody asks for the most they can get. Just like my family, they would prefer to sit on their deck and look at the orchard and the big oak trees that used to be where Marinelli Drive is now. They looked at that for 30 years, and now they look at a bunch of houses in a subdivision. That's just, that's progress, you know? Calagiro, like I said, across the street, you've got estate-sized lots that, that's our neighbors, and now all of a sudden, these lots are half the size of theirs. You know, it's not reasonable to expect them to have to match Calagiro's size, just like it's not reasonable for us to match theirs, because they were there a few years before what we're doing. My parents are not out-of-town developers here to ruin neighborhoods and make a quick buck. They're a retired couple in their 70s and 80s who have resided at this property for four decades, and now they're trying to make the most of their largest asset, which is their property, in their retirement. I disagree with what they're saying, that you're going to get the same price per linear foot of lot. I don't think that's correct. I think that that's not correct, and I think that we would lose a fair bit by losing three lots. Then the other argument is, you know, the smaller lots will diminish property value. And I mean, to answer that, just go on Terra Vida's website and take a look what their houses are selling for. The cheapest house you can buy there starts almost at $1 million, and that's on a 39-foot lot. So I really can't see how this is going to affect property value in any negative aspect. And at the end of the day, the people who are most affected by this development are my family. My sister lives next door to my parents, and both of them don't plan to move, so this development's going to be in their backyard. So it's not their intention to make their life crappy by putting something crappy behind them, or see the roads torn up forever, or to have construction going on forever. The plan is to sell those six lots right away, put in the services right away, and have it done. They don't want to listen to hammers banging, you know, for six years going down the road. They don't want to have dust from lots being dug up coming into their windows either. So this affects them more than anybody else. So I would just ask that you respect the recommendations of your own planners. These are the only people who are truly unbiased. Their conclusions are based on good planning principles alone and nothing else. Any questions?
Any questions of council for Mr. Weatherall? Yeah, I guess we're good. Okay, thank you very much. Is that it for your group? That's it? Okay, all right. Thank you. Well, this public meeting with respect to the Well, this public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. What's the will of council? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yeah, Your Worship, I mean, I know that we received some comments from neighbors and from others. Sometimes I feel like we're caught between a rock and a hard place. I mean, we have the official plan that gets downloaded into our official plan, and as we heard Mr. Hrlavich say, he wouldn't even be able to support an R1C zone. In what we have right now, I mean, I think that Mr. Vaca was asking for an R1E, which would bring a fifteen-meter, a fifteen-meter lot frontage, which is forty-nine-point-two, and what the developer is proposing is a thirteen-point-three, which works out to forty-three-point-six. We're five-and-a-half feet away. I mean, I guess some would consider it minor, others wouldn't. I'm probably one of the ones that would consider it minor. I'd be happy to move staff's recommendation.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo to move the recommendation. Do we have a second there? We'll call it again. Motion by the Counselor Peter Angelo, do we have a second there? Okay, so that motion fails. Do we have another motion?
Yeah, I'm not sure really the, what we can do here. I think I'm not going to support it, but either turn it down or defer the matter to compromise and come back with a different plan and solution. The severance I don't like. A subdivision, that's our decision, and I think that's what I'd like to see.
I'll second that.
Okay, so you're going to make a motion for deferral. Counselor Thompson?
I see.
Okay, motion by Counselor Thompson for deferral, second by Counselor Campbell. That is non-debatable, so we'll call the vote, that vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimously approved, so the development is not canceled, it's not turned down, it's just deferred. So it gives you a chance to go back with your planner and your parents and discuss, and then you can come back and meet with our planner and come with a revised proposal. So thank you to everybody that were here for this proposal. We're going to move on to the next planning matter. So thank you very much.
What was that?
Oh, we don't have another plan. Yeah, yeah, for sure. My apologies to our presenters. I know under the appointments and presentations, we do have a couple of presentations. So first off, six-point-one, I'd like to invite the Mental Health Awareness Peer Support Group. So we've got Stephanie Farkason. She's going to make a presentation to city council about mental health awareness, peer support, weekly meetings, available to the public. So welcome.
Thank you. Congratulations, Jim.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank you for allowing myself to come and speak to you about our organization. I have spoke with a few counselors already. Actually, Lori attended one of our mental awareness peer support meetings, so that was great. So we're a nonprofit organization that was formed to be the voice for people who are struggling or who have lost their voice altogether with mental illness and suffering along those lines. So as advocates for effective mental health care throughout this region, we have decided to voice our concerns with all political representations throughout this region. As we know, the legislation must change for the frontline staff to be able to do their jobs effectively. So we're here tonight to ask, well, I'm here, but we'll pretend like everyone else is too. So we're here tonight to ask this council from Niagara Falls to support Niagara United in their fight to promote a better mental health state for all of the four-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight people of this region. Niagara United has been actively researching the services that are available to people with mental health conditions in Niagara, and sadly, we or I must advise this council that there's not much for our people. The resources that we do have are mostly focused on our younger generations, which is aiming at the root cause of the problem, to alleviate and address mental health concerns for our kids. And Niagara United does agree that that would be the most beneficial for the future, but our adult citizens deserve more as well. In St. Catherine's, this past year, we have seen an increase in public suicide at the public infrastructure known as the Burgoyne Bridge. However, public suicide in Niagara Falls is also of grave concern. Documented suicide by the means of using Niagara Falls is approximately twenty to forty per year, and with just this particular location, Niagara Falls is losing one person every nine days. We need to do more. We need for all cities of this region to stand united, to provide effective resources, and Niagara United is committed to gaining more access for the citizens of Niagara, to be able to utilize these resources. So far, Niagara United has started mental awareness peer support meetings, just across the street at the hub, actually, and in St. Catherine's, which have great turnouts, and they're held at St. Barnabas Church on Queenston Street. We have also launched a kids' meeting once a month in St. Catherine's for the ages six to thirteen, in which they have renamed MAPS to the Inside Out Group. MAPS will also be launched in Grimsby as of April 2019. Aside from providing direct community support with mental awareness peer support meetings, we have also spoken to St. Catherine City Council and Regional Council about barriers on the Burgoyne Bridge. We have traveled to Queens Park with Wayne Gates and received nearly a thousand signatures to support a motion for two-point-five million dollars brought directly down to this region for three twenty-four-seven mental health care facilities to provide medical access for those in distress. In October, we held a rally for better mental health in Niagara, in which hundreds of people showed up. And Niagara United has also hosted Walks of Hope, in which we attach messages of hope throughout the city, and we have done this in Niagara Falls and St. Catherine's. The most recent time we hung the notes, we received a message the same day on Facebook from a woman who said that she was walking across the bridge and read one of her notes, and that gave her the hope to continue walking across that bridge and message one of us and ask for help. According to Niagara United, homelessness, addiction, and suicide are just symptoms of underlying mental health conditions, and Niagara United is ready for the long road ahead, and we hope that we can count on the support from Niagara Falls City Council as we move forward in bringing about the necessary changes for better mental health practices within the Niagara region. Thank you for allowing me, but us, to present to you this evening, and together we can do better.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions for Stephanie? Yes, Counselor Iannone?
No questions. I just want to congratulate you and your group. I know people who've attended your MAPS meeting, and it has benefited them huge. They left feeling much more comfortable and had a place to share. So I just want to say congratulations to all of you. You're doing fantastic.
Thank you.
And I move that council will support MAPS and perhaps put that in, I'm not sure if that information's on our website, but know that if we can put that on our website so that people know that they can go to that, and there's someplace they can go where they're not judged, they're not, they're not, and they can feel comfortable and safe.
And in the meantime, in the meantime, between, you know, we're going to our physicians to access help, and unfortunately, there's waitlists.
Well, the problem is, you said, we don't have enough funding. So you're creating, you're creating support that isn't out there for people, and it doesn't cost them money, and they, and I know somebody who left and felt much better after they did. So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
And I support, I just make a motion that we support it and put the information on their meeting times on our website.
Okay, motion by Counselor, Iannone, second by Counselor Campbell, that we support MAPS and their meetings and by promoting it on our website, so every Thursday night, seven till nine, at the hub on Queen Street. We'll call the, yes?
Just wanted to, yeah. Thanks, Steph, for coming. I've met with Stephanie, and, you know, you don't realize how much, how much she had to say about the linkage between mental health and mental illness and addiction that leads to, you know, affordable housing and everything. It's all kind of linked together, and you talked about the funding that Wayne Gates came up at Queens Park, and you were a big part of that, so I want to congratulate you and your whole Niagara United for bringing that funding, because you were a real big part of getting that funding. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Then we'll call the vote. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. So thanks very much, Stephanie.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, you too. Okay, next up, we've got the very patient Guardians of the Children. Ray Corosol and his group would like to make a short presentation to council introducing the Niagara chapter of the Guardians of the Children. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for having us today. We're here to introduce ourselves. We became established in the area in June of last year, and so we're here tonight to say hello. My name's Storm Racer, and I'm the president of the Guardians of the Children Niagara Chapter. This is...
I'm Bam Bam. I do all the marketing and all the infrastructure to the group.
And I'm Pappy. That might be my road name, and I'm in the public relations.
So just so everybody knows real quick, the reason we use our road names, because we do help children in the courts, and there are pedophiles and whatnot in the courts as well. We don't want them to know our real name due to social media, them finding our families, our children, whatnot. So we use road names to protect the identity of ourselves and our families.
So Guardians of the Children is a nonprofit organization. We're a group of volunteer motorcycle enthusiasts who have chapters across North America. We were established in the United States in 2006, and we launched our first Canadian chapter in 2014. So as of today, we have seventeen chapters across Canada. We range from British Columbia all the way out to PEI. So what we do is we partner with organizations in the area, child advocacy organizations, child, or victim assistance organizations, and groups like schools and things like that. We support families in the local area, not just with child abuse, but also in regards to bullying. So the mission of Guardians of the Children is to recognize and react to child abuse and educate the public to do the same. We are, we serve as advocates to provide strength and stability to families in crisis, and we are an answer to the prayers of an abused child and teen in regards to courage, support, and protection. So we host events throughout the area to have families know that we're here, basically. They're nonprofit events, so we can give back to the community as well, and they're posted on our website. If you'd like to look us up, if you'd like more information, you can go onto our national page, which is www.guardiansofthechildrencanada.com. And if you'd like to connect with your local chapter, which is ourselves, we're on Facebook at Guardians of the Children Niagara Chapter. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask. We do have meet and greets once a month. We are in connection with Heartland Forest, so we host our meetings out of Heartland Forest, and they also allow us to have our meet and greets and things like that. And then we also volunteer our time for their events as well. And, yeah, so please ask any questions that you might have.
That's great. Thank you very much for your presentation, a great thing that you're doing. Do you have any questions or comments of city council? I guess everybody understands and everyone appreciates what you're doing, so on behalf of all of us, we'd like to say thanks for what you're doing and thanks for coming today to share this. Oh, we do have a question.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate it. And there's a motion needed.
Can we put that on our website?
Yeah, put that on our website as well.
Community group.
That would be great. That would be great, thank you.
We're going to have to have a special section, you know, for council meetings. That's all our council makes. So why don't we have a motion then by Counselor Campbell, second by Counselor Iannone, that we have a reference on the website to what you do for people that want to participate or learn more about what you're doing, and through our social media connections, our web, Facebook as well. So we'll call that vote. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. So thanks very much. Appreciate you coming out.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. I'm Kojak, by the way.
So is Ray.
Yeah. Okay, at this point, we are now going to our budget presentations, and I'm going to switch seats with our budget chair, Counselor Peter Angelo.
Oh, geez, thanks.
Thank you, Worship. At our last council meeting, yeah, at our last council meeting, Ms. Clark had given us her first presentation of the operating budget, and council had asked her to come back with some different options, looking at exactly what the tax rate would be, reducing it a little bit and getting down to zero. So I understand that Ms. Clark has a new presentation that she wants to walk us through. I'll pass it over to Ms. Clark.
Thank you. Okay, try to go through this quickly. So tonight, we're going to review the revised 2019 operating budget. It was directed to come back with options to get us to zero or less, and we're recommending approval for tonight's. Just a quick overview, we're maintaining our existing core service levels with additional expenditures due to council priorities. These are, the budget was developed consistent with previous years. The enhanced services are tied to transit enhancement, specifically intermunicipal transit is a large part of that, as we discussed two weeks ago. We talked about the new staff last time. There's new assessment growth of the one-point-eight-two percent, lower debt servicing charges, and of course, we discussed the impact of negotiations. So here's the revised budget as it stands. There were a number of adjustments that had to be made from the last budget, so our revised deficit is looking at one-point-one million dollars, which would result in a net levy increase to of one-point-six-four percent. How did we get there from the one-point-six that I presented two weeks ago? I've listed all of the adjustments on how we got to the bottom, which apparently I've run out of room on the projector there. We did, we were able to find some increase in our investment budget. Our interest rates, everybody's interest rates have been going up, so that resulted in a larger budget for investments. I'm not going to go through each one of these, but if you have questions, please ask. Just going to highlight benefits. I was able to find reductions of two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand in here. We took out the Lundys Lane CIP budget, and this is because when going through the capital budget in May 2018 last year, council approved a transfer of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to a special-purpose reserve for the Lundys Lane CIP, so this no longer needs to be included in the tax levy. The library came back. They were able to reduce their budget by thirty-two-thousand dollars, so that was helpful. And then, of course, we've got the additional fee waiver allocation from that council report and the additional allowance for committees. So this is just a revised, a new look at the summary of revenues and expenses on the next slide. So revenues, again, proposed to go up four-point-eight-four percent. The only change to revenues was that investments line, which is over here. So you can see the increase of four-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand, and then a small adjustment in sales and indirect costs. Expenditures, they're five-point-seven-four percent increase right now. Made various changes to those, most notably in the benefits. You can see those have gone down to five percent, and previously they were at seven. So council requested options, so I've got three to show you. So status quo would be our net levy increase of one-point-six-four percent, which is the budget as presented two weeks ago, with the adjustments that were on the previous slides. Option two is going to reduce the impact on the net levy to point-four-nine-five percent, and option three would reduce it to zero. So again, option one, status quo. Option two, so how do we get to point-four-nine-five percent? This requires a reduction to the budget of seven-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, and I've proposed this by reducing our transfer to reserves. So we had a transfer built, we were asking for a transfer to special-purpose reserve for assessment appeals of two-hundred-thousand. I've proposed that we can remove that, as well as our election reserve, seventy-thousand, we can remove that. And the transfer to capital, I had previously suggested that we increase it to four-point-five million, and this was to help offset the capital salaries that were transferred over to the capital budget. I've included a reduction of five-hundred-thousand, I put it back at the four-million-dollar level that's been historically in the budget. So this, these three changes result in dropping the net levy increase to point-five percent. Option three includes, to get us to zero, includes the same three changes, and then adding in at the bottom here, reducing our fleet replacement reserve. So if you remember, two weeks ago, we had talked about a fleet replacement reserve was about eight-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand. We would need to reduce that by the three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand to get down to zero. I just included some slides about the OLG fund history, so council's aware that back in 2013, when this agreement initiated, council set out some priorities for where to use the funding. That was tax relief, which is six million dollars, hospital investment, economic development initiatives, policing fee for service, and capital infrastructure improvements. The spending allocations approved by council reported biannually, so I'll be back in May with an update on the OLG report and an update on... and an update on the priorities and where they're at. Currently, there's the almost $6 million in the tax, subsidizing the taxes. And this works out to an 8.7% subsidy on your tax budget. This chart just illustrates the impact of the OLG money on the average taxpayer. So, you can see previously, the $3 million that the city received was always included in operating, subsidizing the taxes. So, you can see the difference between the two lines. The green one being the city's, your taxes without OLG money, and the purple being with OLG. In 2014, council approved an additional $2.8 million to be included in the operating budget. And this is why this jumps right here. And I've included a slide with the actual dollars to show you. So, prior to the additional almost $3 million being added, the average residential taxpayer was getting a $60 break a year. And now, it's up around $115. So, there's pros and cons of using the OLG allocation in the property tax budget. It is a one-time tax relief to property owners. If you keep it in, it continues to be a tax relief. But once it's in there, it's harder to pull it back out, should we wish to use it for other purposes, like infrastructure, because it would result in a tax increase. The cons are, it doesn't help address our capital infrastructure deficit. The $6 million that's tied up in operating can't be used for infrastructure. And then, should, everyone's talked about this. Should the agreement ever disappear, we would be at risk of a potential tax increase to make up for that difference. So, for recommendations, we believe the draft budget presented earlier at 1.64 is best. If this isn't acceptable, we're recommending option two with a proposed net levy of 0.5%. We're not recommending option three, and that's primarily to keep the fleet replacement reserve intact.
Questions of Ms. Clark, Counselor Carrio?
Just a quick question then, maybe for some that don't know why. We started, Tiffany, we started subsidizing the operating budget with the OLG money. How many years ago?
Ninety-six.
1998.
Six, I think.
And we did it for a specific reason. For, for some of us or some of them that aren't here, weren't here then, we could have it just, why did we start doing that? There was a specific reason that we started subsidizing the operating budget with the OLG money. So, it might be a good time to say why we did that. And I didn't think that that would just continue, continue, continue. But I mean, as we looked at different budgets, we found ourselves in a position where we had no choice. But I think it's important for some of the newer people to hear why we started subsidizing the operating budget with the OLG money.
Are you asking staff or the city historian?
Actually, it was $2.3 million for the first ten years.
I don't have this, I don't have the...
There's a specific chunk that we, we got ourselves in. We had to subsidize for some reason.
I think just generally, and I, we can, we can go back and check the minutes as to why that.
You're talking the MPAC assessment appeal?
That was later.
Yeah, initially, I think council had said that, you know, the money that it received from the province for hosting the casino would go to offset any, like, any taxes. Right? So, that was initially put into our operating budget. And then, it went from $2.4 to $3 million after ten years, as Wayne had said. Later on, what happened was there was an assessment appeal on the casino. And the amount of money that the city receives through taxation dropped significantly. I believe it was $2.9 million in one year, one fiscal year. So, instead of passing that on to the taxpayers, council decided to once again use the levy or the revenue from the OLG agreement to make the budget whole.
And that's how we got here.
That's how we got here. So, now, you've got a, basically, a stabilization, if you will, that amount of money that's embedded in the operating budget. As Ms. Clark indicated, it's doing a subsidy of about 8.7, 8.8%. The difficulty we face every year is because of other factors. It's hard now to wean yourself off of that. And we tried to look at some of those approaches this year in the budget. But we, you know, the way we tried to counter it is by saying, perhaps we can contribute more into capital investment with a $500,000 transfer. We have our vehicle, basically, our vehicle transfer amount. For those that may not understand how that works, your fleet in the operational budget, you're basically renting those vehicles back from yourself. You have to pay for the ongoing maintenance and usage of that. So, a portion of that builds you a reserve to be transferred for future vehicle purchases. We've never really fully funded that. And what we were attempting to do this year was to try to fund it as completely as we could to allow that transfer from this year's budget of about $800,000 to allow for vehicle purchases in future years. And one of the recommendations tonight is to cut back that transfer of $500,000 that we would've liked to have made. And then, cutting that fleet transfer down in half. So, those are the two big items that will help you get here. They are transfers to reserves in one case and a transfer to capital in the other.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Carrio.
And in the operating budget, we still have $4 million being transferred from operating to capital in all three scenarios.
We do, yes. Yes, we do. Any other questions of Ms. Clark or staff? No? Okay. I know I have heard some comments around the table about getting to zero and even some comments about going below zero. So, I did ask staff to prepare a slide of what would happen if the transfer to capital was scaled back. So, I'll just have Mr. Mattson put that up. And I think that for every $500,000 that it scaled back, it represents, I think it's 0.744 of a percent. It's food for thought for council. It can start a discussion if you wish. Council has done a good job in, council has done a good job in, in putting the OLG money where it needs to be. This year, I believe that we are spending close to $15 million more in infrastructure spending with the OLG funds. As well as at the end of April, there usually comes a reconciliation report that we deal with in May, where we're probably looking at spending another $4 to $5 million. So, as Counselor Carrio pointed out, right now, there is $4 million in the operating budget that we transfer into our capital budget on an annual basis. Staff are proposing that it goes up to $4.5 million this year. In option two, they've scaled it back to the $4 million again. But the decrease in $500,000 annually represents about a 0.744 decrease in our tax rate. I understand that there's different schools of thought. Staff would like to keep the money there for infrastructure spending. But again, it's, it's open for discussion for council. Counselor Ianone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that Tiffany had asked, we're asking council to approve this budget tonight. But we got our capital budget on Thursday, and I don't know about anybody else, but I'm only halfway through it. And I've put hours and hours into that capital budget. So, I'm not prepared to approve that, and I have so many questions. But I'd like to see us approve both budgets at the same time. So, I'm hoping that we can defer the operating budget until we're prepared to approve both at the same time.
I, I don't mind deferring them, to be honest with you, like, for another council meeting. But I'd like to get questions or concerns on the floor so that we get to the point where, when we do come back, we have an understanding of perhaps where we're heading.
Does that sound far?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I used three computers today to go from one to the other to the other. And old school, I do notes, I don't, can't use a calendar on my phone. I would really like a hard copy of the budget.
Both.
You two? On both budgets? From, just trying to compare, and I think actuals and budgeted. Because I was comparing different things to different things. And I'll just do a for instance for you. On our tab 10, oh, you know what, I'll wait for capital for this. Because it's, there's a whole list of questions that... But it is so much easier for me to take a sticky note off, make a note, and put it on that tab and not use another computer to have to go to, to look up the 2018's budget to see what we did in 2018, what we actually spent, what we have now. I just like, I want it old school.
Can I just ask?
Yes.
I don't think a hard copy of the budget is, is anything difficult. I'm sure that we can get those out. Actuals from '17 or '18?
'18. But I understand that the 2017 financials aren't done. Am I saying that correctly? That the 2017 financials aren't done. I find that confusing, looking as we're trying to approve 2019.
Okay.
So, can, can that be explained to us? And do I need a motion for hard copies?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think so. Yep.
Oh, yeah. And I'd, oh, I'd wait till she's done, I'm sorry, that's disrespectful.
She just wants to answer the 2017.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I am working on them. It's been challenging since Todd left. We're very short-staffed. So, I have been trying to get the 2017 financials done, but the budgets took precedent.
I agree. Maybe we could hire somebody to help her. That seems to be an issue here. I'd like to defer the operating budget so that we can discuss the capital budget and perhaps at a later date, pass both of them at the same time. So, I'd move deferral on the operational budget.
Okay, can I see if anyone has any questions about the operating budget first? Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Campbell?
More comment. I can't support, and I don't even wanna talk about a 0% increase or less than 0% increase. Staff is recommending option one or option two. I'm more than happy to discuss that. But if we start going with below 0% increase, we're gonna start losing services. That's gonna happen. It's happened in the past.
Yeah, and I don't know that that's the plan, so. I guess it depends what council looks at in the budget. Right? I mean, if we're looking at services, then we're looking at services. If we're not looking at services, then I don't really...
I pay my taxes 'cause I need the services. It's simple as that.
I understand.
And there's a lot of people living in homes on a minimum income. Yes, 1% increase. But if they don't have the services, bus, snow cleaning, sidewalk cleaning...
But no one's talking about getting rid of any of those, so.
I'm saying I can't support a 0% or less increase.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Carrio and the mayor.
I think that, I think that we get caught up in 0%, 1%, 2%. I think we need to each do a, you know, get hard copies of the budget and do a detailed analysis and go through the budget, rather than just deciding that you can't accept a zero or you can't accept a one, you can't accept a two. I can guarantee you that if we go through the, I've gone through the capital budget. And there's, there's three or four million dollars I could take out of the capital budget without affecting any. So, I could, I could take out this $4 million transfer to the capital budget, take out the things that I'm glad to speak about that I found in the capital budget going through this miniscule little print that I've got on my iPad. I, when I get bigger print, I'm sure I'll find a lot more. But I think we get hung up on the number. How much time do we spend individually going through the numbers in the budget? We don't spend enough time on it.
No.
We spend hours and hours and hours in this council chamber, listening to deputations, doing this, doing that. We should be spending more time getting very familiar with line by line of where our money's going and how we're spending our dollars, rather than getting preoccupied with the number, whether it's zero or one or, or 4% reduction. Let's go through it. Let's all go through it. Let's take the time to do it.
Can we have a dedicated meeting just on this?
Pardon me?
Can we have a dedicated meeting just on this? No deputations?
I don't care how much time we spend on this.
No, just this.
I don't care how much time we spend on this. Nothing more important that this council is gonna do in this term than get a good handle on our budget, spend the money that we have to, don't spend the money where we don't have to. And how much has been taken into consideration in our budget process about what we know is looming in the future? When I look at it, I don't think that the staff's taken anything into consideration on what might happen in the future. Not wanting to get into that now. But when I look at it, I don't think that we've taken that into consideration yet. Even though we've talked about it, it doesn't reflect in the budget. So, I'm going to, at the time when, when the time's right, when everybody's finished asking their questions, ask for deferral, ask for hard copies of the budget and details. Like, we used to get detailed capital budget in a big binder. We used to get a big binder with all the details, not just, you know, highlights. I'd like to have a good look at it. I don't mind how much time it takes. It's too important.
Okay. Thank you, good comments. I have the mayor and then Counselor Strange.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, first of all, appreciate what staff has done here. And, you know, I don't, I don't share all the feelings of Counselor Carrio. I don't think we should dig into all the minutia. We give guidance to our staff. We've got experts. We're not experts. We give them guidance and say, come in at 1%, come at cost of living, come at whatever. And I think we do give them guidance and then we come back and see what they give us. And if we don't like it, then we give different guidance. You know, one of my big concerns, and this is one of the things I'd like to share with my counselors here, is that our OLG funding, we shouldn't take it for granted. When we negotiated that, we knew it could be gone with 30 days' notice. And I don't wanna take that for granted. It could be gone so fast and this budget will be spun around. And right now, we put $6 million bucks into artificially lowering our taxes here in the town. And, and we've got all this great infrastructure going on. One reason, 'cause we've got OLG money. There's no, there's no other reason. It's, it makes what we budget pale in comparison. I don't have a problem taking two more weeks. I don't have a problem getting a printed out binder for everyone to go line by line. But I do have a problem with micromanaging. We're not gonna tell them where to plow, how to plow, what plows to buy. We give guidance and then we vote on it. Or we vote against it, whatever you want. But I'm very comfortable with one of these recommendations that staff gave. I won't, will not support anything below what they've given us. And I don't wanna take a chance and the risk. Because I need, I know everyone here understands amalgamation in some form is coming. We don't know what it's gonna look like, but it's coming. So, we wanna be prepared for the storm, and I think our staff have heard us. And, and they'll have to reflect that in our capital budget. But the other thing I wanna mention to you is, if the current government has already cut autism funding and things like that, you think that the sacred cow, the OLG financing, is anything you can take to the bank and guarantee?
Oh, no.
Sorry to say that publicly, but the fact is, yes, we host two casinos. And yes, we negotiated a good agreement. But yes, with 30 days' notice, it can be gone. So, I just wanna throw caution to the wind that when we go through this, that we make sure we don't know what's happening tomorrow. We wanna be prepared for it. So, thank you.
I have Counselor Strange, Ianone, and Lakoko.
Yes, through Chair. I'm just wondering, when's the last time we've had like a 0% increase? You would know if anybody...
2010, I believe, or 2008. 2008, we had a nominal budget.
And how much was our OLG fund back then?
A few million.
And how much is it now?
A lot more.
25 million. Okay. The other question is just our, you know, amalgamation. We know probably it's gonna happen. And we gotta wonder what's gonna happen with a lot of our funds, the OLG. And, and our reserve. I remember asking Tiffany last meeting if we had any report on our reserve, detailed report, and what we could touch and what we couldn't touch. Is there any upcoming report for that or when will that come up?
Through you, Mr. Chair. When I get to the capital present, budget presentation, I've indicated that we'll bring back a full reconciliation of reserves with the May report. Given that it's the end of February, we haven't even started our accruals yet for 2018. So, to say we would be complete with our financials for '18 now is way too soon. So, we'll try to get that pulled together for the May OLG meeting.
Just on that point?
I just, I just wanted to make one comment and related to the talk of the elimination of the $4 million. We could eliminate this $400 million, or this $4 million of the operating budget. We've got a list on tab 10 of the capital budget. There's $60 million in priority projects sitting there that our staff believe need to get pushed forward, that right now have no funding. So, you might be able to go into the capital budget and find $4 million in ones you don't wanna do. We'd be happy to hear what those are. If we could replace it with $4 million of the next priorities that are coming right behind it. And that's what we'd hope you'd do. We hope you wouldn't go and eliminate $4 million. The $4 million operating contribution represents about 10% of our total capital budget. If the OLG disappears, which represents thirty-five percent of our capital budget, that's forty-five percent of our capital budget that's gone immediately. And with our capital deficit that we have right now and the fact that we've got currently sitting there sixty million dollars in unfunded projects, it really concerns me of having that increasing, uh, capital deficit. We've been so fortunate over the last four or five years to be spending that OLG money to get ahead on projects that quite honestly, we would not have been able to do for this community. We did ten parks last year, we're proposing ten parks this year. I can tell you, if we didn't have that OLG money, we wouldn't be doing any parks because we don't have enough money to keep our roads paved. We don't have enough money to keep our buildings up to snuff. So, you know, I, we would not at all be recommending this approach because we've worked very hard to not only keep the capital dollars going, but keeping that and negotiating that OLG deal to get ahead of the capital infrastructure game. And I think all of us around the table should be very proud of all of the capital works that we've been able to do over the last few years that have been a result of that OLG money. So, Mr. Chair, if I could suggest, if the mood tonight is to defer both of the budgets, could I suggest then, following the counselor's lead, that we schedule a special council meeting? I'd suggest we do that next Tuesday or the Tuesday after because our next council meeting isn't for a month. And to be quite honest, I've got staff here behind me chomping at the bit to get capital projects out the door so we can take advantage of some of the preferred funding. We're gonna be, if we're first out the door, being ready to go as soon as the weather breaks. And if we wait another month, we're another month behind the eight ball. So I'll challenge council, let's say, we're happy to do that. Let's schedule it next Tuesday or the Tuesday after and let's get both of these budgets done.
Point?
I'm fine with that. Yep, to that point, Counselor, you're next anyway.
Okay, thank you. Did we not already approve spending up to a certain?
That's operating.
That's operating, okay.
That's operating.
So I have a ton of questions for capital, so I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that you'd like a motion that we meet again for a separate meeting after we discuss our capital project questions tonight. So I would make, I would make a motion that council have a dedicated meeting to discuss strictly budget, no deputation, no in-camera, no new business, no, no anything, um, as soon as it can be scheduled. So I'd make that a motion.
March fifth?
March fifth? March fifth is next Tuesday?
Yep.
Is counsel good for March fifth? Is counsel good for March fifth?
No.
No.
I'm away.
March twelfth?
Is counsel good for March twelfth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
You're away.
Nineteenth? That's the regular one, that's the regular one? Yeah. Then we're, then we're at the regular meeting of the nineteenth.
Can we go on another night of the Tuesday?
Yeah, you can go any night.
We can. I'm just trying to see if we can come to consensus on a date. Is there another date other than next Tuesday that would work?
I, I'm assuming we're working around March break here because.
No, no.
And I, but for some, maybe they are and you book your vacation on March break and it's done and I get that. So if March break is problematic, can somebody here say March break is problematic? Because if it's not.
It's not for me.
See, I would've thought it was you because of teaching.
It might be for two of us.
It, it's, you're gone. Yeah, and you can't change that. So is there a time outside of that that doesn't interfere with somebody's March break holiday?
Next week, no good, like the entire week?
No, I'm not here next week.
I'm not here next week either.
I think we start with the nineteenth, I don't see any other option. Yeah. That's what I think too.
Okay.
Okay, so I moved May nineteenth?
March, okay.
March nineteenth. See you in May. That is our regular meeting? I thought it was the end of the month.
It is a regular night as our CAO was saying, so we would have other.
Can we have nothing else on it?
Well, we probably already have planning items.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it just left, I'm guessing there's probably some planning meetings already scheduled.
Can we start early, Mr. Chair?
We can always start early, yeah, for sure. I mean, even tonight, you know, starting at five o'clock makes a little difference. You do still have the floor, yes.
That motion has to pass.
Well, I, I haven't even taken it yet because the motion is two-part. Uh, one that we defer it until, uh, March nineteenth. So I don't want to take the motion and deferral until everyone's had a chance to speak. I have a couple of other speakers. I have Counselor Lakoko and Counselor Campbell.
So then can I speak without you calling that motion because I still have the floor?
Yeah, you do.
Okay, thank you. Um, the mayor talked about we walk a fine line between approving a budget and micromanaging. I'm not asking to micromanage, but there's so many questions in both. We're not, we're not saying, hey, don't plow this street, but plow this street. I don't know what we're saying. Um, Counselor Lakoko and I spent four hours, five hours today going line by line through the capital budget and comparing very hard on a computer. We really did have computers going right across my island. But there's, there are things in there that, like Counselor Carroll said, I've just, there's so much savings in there, I think. And while we talk about amalgamation is coming, I agree. I don't think we're gonna have a chance. I think I've said to this council, I think we are the last Niagara Falls council. This, this is it. The nine of us are the last actual, just Niagara Falls council. And I think if, if, if the fourth government comes in in September and says, this is how you're gonna amalgamating, we've said it a hundred times, we are the golden goose of money in this municipality, in this region and he's gonna say, and spending occurs like this. I think this is probably the la, and I could be wrong, but I think this is probably the last budget. We do have absolutely full control over that OLG money and how we spend it, where we put it and whether we can give the taxpayers a less than zero break. I don't care who, what your opinion is, everybody's gonna stand here and vote the way they think they should do it. But I really think, I don't think we're gonna cut services. I think the money's there and I think this is the last opportunity we ever have to do zero or save people money. Because after this, we're gonna be at the will of this province, who, I'm not gonna get political, but I think we're gonna be at the will of this province and we're not gonna have that OLG money. We may have it, but we're gonna be told how we can spend it because that's gonna be split up amongst all the other municipalities in the region. So I think we have one tiny last chance to decide what we're doing for our residents on what we think is best, not what the province dictates to us as best. I don't think it's micromanaging.
Okay, thanks. I have Counselor Lakoko and Campbell. And Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know I'm new, so I've spent hours and hours going through this by myself. I've spent hours with the staff, many staff, thank you so much. I've spent hours with Counselor Iainone and I'm wondering if a better use of time instead of each one of us always contacting the staff at our next meeting specifically for budget, that we go through each of them and I, I agree we shouldn't micromanage, but I don't think that's micromanaging. I think it's making us aware and then we can start to see where we can cut, where we should put more money. So that next meeting that's coming up, I would like just to have that and go through line by line with the staff here so they can explain it with more detail on paper.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, looking at the calendar, March nineteenth, the, uh, Culture Commission has, uh, set aside time at four o'clock for discussion of the new cultures, uh, center going up at the, around the museum.
Right.
So.
Yeah, that one was delayed from the winter storm that we had a couple of weeks ago. Uh, Counselor Carroll?
Jim, I'm so happy you feel better, you're back, you're in fighting mode. We've had this, we've had this budget fight so many times and I'm glad that you're up to the fight again. But the, um, we've got the OLG money for a long time. We spent it all. We haven't really given the average taxpayer a break ever since the mayor and the staff took us from three million to twenty, twenty-five million. We spent almost all of it. And the average taxpayer said to me, well, you haven't had a zero budget since you guys have been getting twenty to twenty-five million dollars a year. What do the other municipalities do that don't get twenty to twenty-five million dollars a year as a Wind Terry Oak Grand or whatever you wanna call it? They, they survive, they do it. Uh, I don't know how they do it, but they do it.
I can answer that for you.
Yeah, Mr. Todd wants, I, I mean, we're not in the same situation as every other municipality, that's for sure.
But anyway, before you answer the question, the, the fact remains is that we haven't given our, the average taxpayer a zero budget. We spent it all. We've all agreed, we've spent it. We've come in at one point up, two points up, whatever. This is our chance to do it. So I'd like the opportunity to at least look at it. I don't want to micromanage, but I think people expect us to be the caretakers of their dollar as well as the staff. Staff's done a great job, I'm not being critical of staff. Ultimately, this is gonna be our decision, not staff. Ultimately, we wear the tax increase or decrease, not staff. They do what we ask them to do, get us all the information and then we make the decision based on everything that we get. We do the best thing we can and we may have differ, differences of opinion and the majority will rule.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of points. So if, uh, if I can take the council back to the previous slide, there has been subsidy, eight point seven percent tax subsidy of OLG money that we've put. Even since the New Deal, we put close to three million dollars towards tax subsidization. So we have done that. With the OLG money, we've been able to accelerate our capital project and what other municipalities have done, where we've been able to reduce debt. We've reduced our debt significantly over the last eight years. Others have either kept their debt steady at a steady level by, by rolling over debt, which we haven't been doing that the last several years. When debt servicing comes off, that goes to the bottom line. So we have not been increasing debt to the same root. Some other municipalities have employed where they've had to add one or two percent surcharges on top of their tax increases just to cover new infrastructure projects. And I know a couple, uh, municipalities in the region have done that. They've added a surcharge of one percent. Um, we haven't been able to do that. So that goes right to their taxes. So they would pass a tax increase of two percent. Tacked on is a automatic one percent levy increase just for infrastructure. So we've been lucky not to be able to have to do that on the infrastructure side because we've had that pot of money sitting outside. We've kept that four million dollar contribution steady now for, it's probably at least half a dozen years, I would think. So we haven't put extra burden on the taxpayer capital-wise because we've had that spending. So I think we've done a good job at, at providing some subsidy. We're always saddled with the four point two million dollars in policing costs that's, uh, additional that we've had to take on because OLG refused to pay that anymore. So I, I think we've got, done a good job at managing it. I think we've done a good job at, at keeping taxes reasonable for our ratepayers, but at the same time doing probably, you know, thirty or forty percent more capital work than we ever would have been able to have done. And I think coupled with the tax increase, you've got to balance off all of the good infrastructure work that's been done. And here we're presenting an operating budget this year that we're providing you some options to get you to zero without having to go in and touch the capital program by taking that four million out. So we can get you there, but, you know, our, our, I guess our plea to you is we, we can get you there. We've given you some options, Ms. Clark's given you options, but we don't want to go the route of saying, let's go in and take that four million out. If there's projects you don't like in the capital, tell us what they are. And we can come back and say, here's some other ones that we think we can substitute in if you don't like those and we'll put those on the back burner for a while. And we're, we're happy to do that. We've got sixty million dollars waiting to be funded. So there's no, like, there's many options we can go to if you've got some you don't like.
And there are a number of other municipalities that have already put in an infrastructure levy or an infrastructure tax and we're not one of them. Counselor Iainone?
A, a, and for those of us who want to see zero or less than zero, that's not a, a criticism of staff.
No.
We. Yeah, it, but it's not. At the end of the day, it's the nine of us that vote on this. So it, it doesn't, if, if we choose to do that, that's our decision. It's not critical of a budget that staff brings us. It's just a decision that we make for the residents. So I, I don't want anybody to think it's a personal attack on a budget or anything like that. It's just a decision that we make. Thanks.
Any other comments at all about the operating budget? Okay, if not, then I'll take the motion to, uh, defer the discussion for the operating budget to the March nineteenth meeting and also that members of council receive a hard copy of both the operating and the capital budget. Do I have a second or to that motion? Seconded by Counselor Thompson. If there isn't any other comments, then I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, the motion's carried unanimously? Yes, I do, yeah. Um, we still need to have a presentation from the capital budget and then hopefully, uh, we can get some questions from that one as well. So I'll pass it over to Ms. Clark once again.
Okay, so our capital budget. So this is our overview of our twenty nineteen capital budget. As councils pointed out, this was only provided on Thursday, so perfectly understandable that you've not had a full chance to go through it. Uh, it is available online for both council and residents to view. The budget we're proposing is fully funded based on available sources. We were looking to have it approved tonight, but that's okay. There's a second part that's gonna be presented in May, as councils are familiar, once the, all of the OLG funding is received for the OLG fiscal year returns March thirty-first and once staff's had a chance to have a thorough review of reserve balances and closing off completed capital projects. So just want, given that we have two new counselors on our team, I wanted to highlight some of the capital budget process. So in late fall, directors are required to submit their list of prioritized departmental projects for consideration for the budget. The priorities go one through three. One is important, urgent and shovel-ready. Priority two is projects that may need planning or they're less important priority one projects. And priority three would be things on the radar, but they're not urgent, planned or not necessarily designed. Following that, uh, the CAO, treasurer, myself and the capital accounting staff meet with each department to confirm our understanding and prioritization of requests. We work together to determine which projects the city would be able to fund for the year. Uh, the draft list of proposed projects are discussed with each department. There's a last call for any final revisions, removals or additions of projects. And then finally, finance staff finalize the funding and prepare the budget documentation for council and the public. I thought this slide would also be helpful, particularly again for our new counselor. So how budgets work together? We've got our operating budget, which we just discussed, so that's got our salaries and wages, supplies, materials, contracted services, maintenance for our roads, parks, playgrounds, insurance. Um, we've got our debt payments, so over here we get debt for our capital projects, but the payments for the debt come through our operating budget. Obviously, our capital budget would be growth projects, new vehicles, road widening, asset rehabilitation. And then, of course, we have our reserve fund contributions. So we put away money into our savings account and some of this comes back into our operating budget in the form of maintenance. For example, uh, winter maintenance reserves. So when we have a good year of snow plowing, we might have extra money budgeted that we would put away if we didn't use it all. And then a bad year, we'd be able to pull from that reserve. And then some of our reserve funds are used for our capital budget. Uh, so this just shows a five-year history of our capital funding. Uh, you can see in, in two thousand and fifteen, forty-one point million, sixteen, a little bit lower. We've been consistent at fifty-three million for seventeen and eighteen. Nineteen's currently sitting at forty-five million. This includes pre-approved funding from two thousand and eighteen, that was to be paid in two thousand and nineteen. And then also keep in mind that this does not yet include what we would allocate in the May report. So council typically allocates another five million or so in the May report. Pre-approved projects in twenty eighteen using twenty nineteen funding. So council might remember they, we approved bus, uh, one new bus for six hundred and twenty-five thousand. This will be funded with transit gas tax monies. And the police building that we've renovated across the street, uh, council approved four point one million dollars to be funded from debt. This just breaks down the proposed capital expenditures by department. Um, as usual, most of our assets fall under municipal works and, um, cemeteries and parks, I guess, would be the next largest one there. Funding sources. So I wanted to highlight all the different areas we have funding for the capital budget. You can see, uh, our CAO previously mentioned that our transfer from operating makes up ten percent of our operating budget. We also have a transfer from our water budget and our sewer budget, but these can only be used on water and sewer projects. They cannot be used for our groves or any other projects. Uh, we get gas tax money, both transit and federal. Uh, the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund, we've been receiving increased grants from the government, so that's great. OLG, we're proposing using fifteen million of it this year, which again, our CAO mentions about thirty-five percent of our capital budget. Deventures, um, the pre-approved four point one is, was approved by council last year, so that's not included in this chart. Reserve funds, this represents the library. All of the libraries' projects that are presented in front of you are funded from their own reserve funds. And then we have capital special purpose. And then we have capital special purpose reserves. So again, this goes back to the reserve fund piggy bank. This is where we're pulling 10% of our budget from this year. Development charges can be used for growth projects in varying formulas. We're able to use 6% of our budget from growth charges. And then external funding would be generally funding from the region for CS, combined sewer overflow projects. Fleet. So in the capital budget, we proposed a fleet replacement number of $3 million, and this is quite a bit higher. In the past, we've been releasing about $1.2 million for fleet. We have a huge backlog in fleet that needs to be replaced. As council can see by the years on these vehicles, they're well past their useful dates. So included for council's reference, I'm not going to go through it line by line, but a list of all of the vehicles that are being proposed to be replaced, most of them being replacement, with the last three being new. And that would represent new vehicles required for growth areas.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Absolutely. Counselor, carry on.
So in the fleet, we're doubling the budget for fleet this year?
Correct.
So that was one of the things I was going to suggest might not be a great idea for this year, concerning what could happen in September? We just buy all these new vehicles and ship them to the region? So I mean, that just was one of the kinds of questions that I had thought we might not have taken into consideration with looming... Yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Down the roads.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Or the sidewalks.
Or the sidewalks. Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, sorry.
So it would be staff's position that regardless of what's going to happen with the region, we need our vehicles replaced. Our staff need reliable vehicles to work on roads, grass cutting, snow plowing, et cetera. So even if an amalgamation takes place, this could be years from now, and we can't just let our fleet deteriorate in the meantime. We've allowed it to get in this poor position by only putting $1.2 million against it. So that would be staff's position on that. There are three fleet in, when we get to the recommendations, we're asking council to approve committing to purchasing a fire tanker and two transit 60-foot buses. This will be a total of $2.5 million. This would be committed, so we can purchase them this year, but they wouldn't be delivered, and we wouldn't be paying for them in 2020. So they would be funded from our 2020 capital budget. Water meter replacement program. I wanted to highlight this one because it's a big ask, and it's a four-year ask of council. We are looking at replacing all meters 1.5 inch or less. Currently, there are approximately 30,000 water meters sized 1.5 inch and less in Niagara Falls. The last city residential water meter installation took place beginning in 1999 and ending in 2001. The average service life for a residential water meter ranges from 15 to 20 years, and as the age increases, the meter accuracy decreases. Accurate meters are critical in ensuring the actual amount of consumption being used by a property is recorded accurately. By replacing them, this is going to allow us to capture more revenue on the water side. So the city's currently set aside $4.7 million in a capital special purpose reserve over the years as we knew this was coming, that our water meters were ending, reaching the end of their useful life. So we're able to fund not quite half of this project with reserve funds. We would need to be funding $7.3 million from the water and sewer budgets. So that's how that looks. I wanted to highlight that because we are asking council to commit to this project. There will be a report coming in April discussing about the procurement process regarding it. Projects not included, this has been mentioned numerous times. So in the back of your capital budget, everybody refers to this as Tab 10. It's the unfunded projects listed by priority, and it's approximately $60 million.
Counselor, I know.
I know we just said Tab 10.
Okay. All right.
So in May, as usual, staff will recommend additional projects for funding once the OLG final quarter payment is received in April and the reconciliation of reserve funds has been completed.
Counselor, I know.
If you don't mind, I'm not going to stand because I want to be able to see my computer, and I can't do it when I stand. So I want to talk about Tab 10, which Counselor LaCoco and I went through line by line. So I have a question on a number of things on Tab 10. So on Tab 10, it says, "Priority 1, our fire station." And it is estimated here that it's $7,475,000. So I went back to the 2018 budget, and that's almost exactly 2, it's just a bit over $2 million more increase than what it was in 2018. When we first discussed this, this was supposed to have development charges that were already sitting in account, committed to it, I think about $2.5, $2.6 million. I pulled up the email we had from that time that would go towards that. Can you tell me, through you to staff, why it is $2 million more than it was projected in 2018?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the counselor. Originally, when we put the proposal back in, I believe, 2016, '17, is around the $4 million mark. Last year, when we came back in the capital, we asked for the reassessment due to increase in cost to build it. We were advised that by them, at that point, it was gone up at least 15%. The architecture and design gave us a price of, I think it was around $5 million. This year, when we were doing our capital, we were in the middle of doing our DCP, our funding...
What does that mean?
Development Charge Program. We were in the middle of doing an assessment for the city. At that time, I asked that company if they could give me a budgeted number, and they said, "Due to inflation rates, it had gone to," and their estimate, $7.475 million.
In a year?
Correct.
I see, I would take issue with that. I'd ask for that to be looked at again. But why, we had an email back in 2016 that told us that there was, at the present time, at the end of January 2016, the development-related capital program for fire had a fund balance of approximately $2.2 million. As you're aware, the construction cost for the fire station at that time, and that's 2016, is estimated to be in the neighborhood of $5 million. So that was 2016. So for 2018, it was estimated to be $5.7, which in two years only increased $750,000. Yet from last year to this year, it's $2 million. Makes no sense. And it says, "Vehicle equipment costs are expected to be around $750,000, totaling $5,750,000." That's in 2016, not just last year. So the cost held from 2016 to 2018. But where are those development charges? Because I've looked for them. They're not sitting in the fire department budget. They're not allocated in here as funds we would use for that. Where is that money?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Our development charges would be sitting in our reserve funds. Because this is on Tab 10, they wouldn't, you wouldn't see any funding related to the, we haven't funded the fire station. I can tell you, we had development charges, sorry, we've already spent development charges of $1.3 million, and that's for the land acquisition and some of the cost for the consulting already for the fire station. So in our prior DC, we do DC studies every five years, and we have one coming up in July for council. So the land was estimated at $1 million five years ago, and the station at $3.2 million. At the time, we already had $1.5 million in our development charges for fire. So we were, our rate study for DCs was based on collecting the remaining balance of that. Now that the cost has gone up so drastically, it would be unrealistic to collect the rest of them from rate charges in the new study.
Okay, so you haven't given me an answer as to why in 2016 the cost was static, and all of a sudden, from 2018, so from 2016, '17, and '18, it was still $5.7. Now that we're looking, now it's sitting on our Tab 10, and it's $7.7. So $2 million.
Counselor, I think you did get the answer. The chief had indicated he went back to the consultants, and that was the number the consultants gave him. He went to the experts to get an update on the number. That's the number that's in front of you. Fire chief, or myself, or Ms. Clark, are not experts in doing those estimates. The chief reached out to the consultants. That's the number they gave him. So that's the answer.
So I'm assuming we could ask for another estimate because $2 million in one year is a huge increase.
Counselor, it's an estimate based on the consultant's recommendation. It's here. Where you get the true price of this is when you go out to tender. The tender is going to be what the actual price is going to be. It could be lower or higher than that price. The best estimate the chief has to put in front of you now is that number.
So the $2.2 million, this email's from you, Mr. Todd. The $2.2 million that was sitting in a reserve in 2016 for the fire station no longer has to, just, and it says, "Just dedicated for the fire station." How much is left in that, "just dedicated for the fire station," if council was to consider that now?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's $1.3 million is left.
Is left. Thank you. I just want to talk about the financial.
And again, Counselor, because we had to utilize a little over a million of it for the land purchase alone, so that's getting close to the $2.2 that was originally in there.
So one more question. When you talk about the consultants gave this cost, are you talking about the consultants' report that we're going to see at the end of April? Or a different consultant?
It's not the same consultant.
Okay, that's what I want to know. And I also don't understand why we're having a budget discussion in regards to having the fire station on Tab 10, when we have a report that's going to talk about whether we need a fire station, and we're not having that, I'm not, we're not having that till 2016. And it has been informed to me that there were comments made in here, "Well, maybe Thorold could take care of it." And the stats were sent to me that when the Thor, so I contacted Thorold. When Thorold's fire station was built, it was built to service a specific area within Thorold. It has absolutely no bearing on provincial time responses, on how it would service Niagara Falls. So the reason it is, and maybe you worked there at the time, but the reason it is where it is now is based on geographical location around it and response times. So it has absolutely no bearing to response times in the new subdivision we've made behind Freshco on Kaler. And now you have approved Thundering Waters and a new hospital. We've got so much more to service out there that I think we're getting mixed messages on how we need to approach that. So I think that report, if the city has it right now, we should have had it so we could talk about it at the same time. If there's a need, we're going to talk about it now after the budget is already approved, and maybe, and... That just doesn't make any sense to me.
Through you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I, Counselor, I've never mentioned anything about Thorold, so I don't...
No, you didn't. I didn't say you did. There was comments here made by another counselor.
So we have arranged for the consultants to be here, I believe, at the end of April. And they are going to be presenting a report on the staffing issue related to Station 7. As you've heard tonight, there is future opportunity for council in this calendar year, if they so desire, to take not only the remaining OLG funds that we will have in May, but we're doing a review of the reserve fund balances at the end of the year, which Ms. Clark will have. So we will have a new amount of capital dollars for you to consider. If, after hearing that study presentation in April, that council wishes to proceed with Station 7, you can make that decision at that point. And you can either fund it through OLG funds or through debt. I have to remind council, though, that that station was always intended to be funded through development charges. And as Ms. Clark has indicated, on a, let's say, even a roughly $6 to $7 million bill, we've only got about $1.3 million funded. So that project is totally unfunded. This council would have to decide how it wants to fund the rest of it, even though the rest of that money is to come from development charges from future growth. So that discussion can be had outside of the current capital budget because even if it was funded through OLG money or debt, if it was funded through debt, we wouldn't even be making that debt servicing probably until 2022, once the station was completed and debt financed and given put in place. So it's not urgent that that item be dealt with as part of this year's capital budget.
And what about the salaries in the operating budget?
Well, that, yeah, that is part of the discussion we're going to have at the April, at the April meeting. So once we've had that presentation by the consultants, council will give us direction. And certainly, if council wants to advance this project later this year, most of the engineering design has been done. That's going to be the will of council, but there certainly would be funding opportunities for it.
Thank you. Ms. Clark made a comment to Counselor Carrio's statement about vehicles, and she said, "Our staff need reliable and safe vehicles now." And I would make the same contention that if we are not meeting provincials, provincial time requirements, response time requirements, that the residents deserve safe and accurate fire service in the same vein that our staff deserve safe, reliable vehicles to drive. Everything costs money. Doesn't matter, everything costs money. So also, in Tab 10 in 2018, we had a Kaler Road reconstruction, and it was $1,990,000. It is not in Tab 10 in 2019. So did we do that? In the budget and the next presentation they give us. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, but it is a bit confusing because the city operates our financials from January 1 to December 31, and the province operates theirs from May 1 to April 30. So at the end of April 30, in every fiscal calendar, we have to do a reconciliation statement for the province to make sure that they gave us what we received.
I understand that.
And at that time, we usually have some funds left over, and it's at that time that we usually go to Tab 10, and, you know, we ask staff to pick a number of different projects to satisfy some needs, so.
So a report that says, "These items on your Tab 10 last time are now, have been already spent and done," because I couldn't remember what part of Kaler we had done.
Sure. Chair, if I could take, so Tab 10 came out around this time last year, had a number of projects that were unfunded. When we came back with the reconciliation report in May, and we said we have $6.5 million. Here's our priority spends for that $600. Kaler was on that list. So you approved a separate report in May, outlining additional capital spending. So there is a definite paper trail of those additional projects that you approved in May, so that they would not have, even though they appeared on that Tab 10, we pulled them off the Tab 10, put them in a separate report, so that it has been completed. But it's, the capital budget really is the original capital budget. You could almost call the May OLG reconciliation almost like an amended capital budget, where there's additional projects that were added. We just have simply not put that together as a report, so you might see it on the Tab 10. And the reason it's not on Tab 10 anymore, or in the budget anymore, because it would have been contained in that May report for OLG funding.
So would that also be the same for the Kitchener Street sewer separation?
That was the one that I believe was on.
That, I believe, is on your list this year.
Well, we did, well, there's a couple, but it's the Kitchener Street sewer separation. In 2018, it was on the budget for $3,488,900. And we looked for it today, and it's not, and it's not on Tab 10 here. We couldn't find it in the construction budget. So did we do it? Is that, because you talk about handing us that last May. I'm not disputing that we did, that we did those projects or that we didn't approve them. I'm saying, this budget, as we're going through it, I'm trying to explain to somebody new who is comparing it, I think we did that. So something that says, "This is the budget you approved in 2019. This is your amended capital budget," would have been great in going through these numbers.
Okay. I understand what you're saying. It would have been nice for the new counselors to have that report that we did back in May to show the extra projects maybe that were funded. But in terms of Kitchener Street, I think Ms. Polack can answer that.
Through you, Chair. What happened with Kitchener Street sewer separation, and it is on Tab 10 right now, is that we re-scoped that to reflect, well, we put in a new budget to reflect a reduced scope where we're just going to consider the underground replacements, given that that's in the area of the existing hospital, that's in the area of the existing hospital, and there might be opportunities in the future for redevelopment, say.
That's on there as design.
Design. So, it is on our 2018 budget as $3,488,000, and it's on this budget for $50,000. So, I'm not even looking at that as the same project. That's not even apples to apples. So, we, did we spend that $3,488,000? Or are we looking at just spending $50,000 on that, and that rest of that still has to be allocated?
Sure. I'll get the answer.
To you, Chair. To the Counselor, we didn't move that project ahead to construction. We had a full-blown design done, both the underground infrastructure replacements, road rehab, streetscaping, et cetera, the full monty. What we've done now, in light of the fact that this is fronting the hospital site, which may, in the future, be redeveloped, we've scaled back the project. So, rather than asking at this time for construction monies to advance that full design, we want $50,000 to revise the design to just consider the underground replacements now. So, we're not asking for any construction money at this time.
So, all I needed was that explained in there? Because I'm doing, I am doing line by line, and nothing in there tells me that. There was one more, 2018 Montrose Road midpile remediation. It's now in under Blackberry Park Suite, if I'm calling that right. And it's now listed for $3 million, almost $3 million. So, I went back and looked, in 2018, it was $1,035,000, $1,035,000. And now it's lumped in with something else. Can somebody explain to me why that's like that?
Sure.
To you, Chair. To the Counselor, Counselor, I think you're talking about Blackburn Parkway.
Okay.
Okay, so.
It's my own writing, I'm not reading properly.
Okay. That is our Montrose Business Park, and we're building, we're constructing the road through there. And the pile is on properties within that business park. So, it's been all lumped in together so that we can use the pile as part of our road reconstruction and fix both problems at once.
Okay. It would be nice to have known that, so. I'll stop. Go ahead. Tab 10 is a real issue.
Were there any other questions at all, right now? Did you still have part of your presentation?
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Okay. All right.
Okay, so, everybody's favorite dot update. Municipality, as I mentioned in the other slide, how budgets work together. We borrow for capital projects, we don't borrow for operating. The city has continued to reduce its debt servicing ratio. And then I've already talked about how Council approved in the 2017 budget for the police building, which we are now going to be paying for in 2019. This was asked of me a couple councils ago to come up with, to bring back a debt slide showing the 2017 total debt charges as a percent of own-source revenues. So, just a reminder, municipalities are eligible to go up to 25% of your own-source revenues. Many of them have internal policies that limit themselves to 10%. You can see we fall right in the middle here. So, we're sitting in a good spot at 4.32%. Again, we've already talked about that I haven't got the 2017 financials done, so this is based on our 2016 FIR, but it would be relatively the same for 17.
So, in other words, if we had debt fall off in 2017, then we would be less than that.
Correct, but we actually got a small debenture for the library in 2017. So, included a few slides about our asset management plan. Did have some notes somewhere. There we go. So, it is updated. Our two asset management plans are from 2013 and 2014. Our core assets being our storm sewer, road network, bridges and culverts, water network and sanitary sewer networks. We're prepared in 2013. So, this is just showing the replacement cost of all of these assets as of 2012. Since then, obviously, we've put more, we've had a lot of growth, we've put more assets in the ground, so our replacement cost has certainly increased. And Council's going to be faced with quite a few decisions for asset management planning over the next five or six years. So, I thought it was important to highlight some of this stuff. You can see our sanitary sewer networks, 507 million, sorry, storm sewers, 507 million, sanitaries, 491 million, roads are 431, bridges and culverts at 9 million, and our water network at 296 million. We have a lot of assets. This just shows from our asset management plan again, where our current funding levels were in 2013 and our average annual funding deficit. So, for our core assets, that was $18 million. I do have a slide coming up later to show the progress that we've made and how we're making strides in reducing that deficit. These two snippets from our asset management plan just highlight those same numbers, but show you where the available funding came from. So, for our core assets, $1.7 million came from taxes, 2.5 from gas tax, and $2 million from other external funding sources, OBGYNs. Our rate-funded assets, these are the water and sewer we talked about, we have the contribution of 4.7 million from our sewer and 4.1 million from our water. And again, these can only be used on the water or sewer, sanitary sewer network assets. This just talks about our general assets, so their 2014 replacement value of facilities, vehicles, machinery and equipment and land improvements totals $332 million, 33, I guess, almost. And then, what our deficit for that, based on available, how much we would need to spend per year versus how much we are actually spending per year, was $11 million at the time of that asset management plan. Again, this just shows, 2.2 million comes from taxes, 400,000 from gas tax, and then the remaining, or the difference would be your deficit. So, this chart was created to update Council on our five-year average of core and general asset reinvestment levels. So, when I say reinvestment levels, any assets that we approve in the capital budget that are related to growth do not help us in reducing our infrastructure deficit. This only takes into account the replacements needed for our existing assets. So, the red line shows the sustainable funding, which is the average annual funding required per asset management plan. Again, these are outdated plans. We are working on new ones as mandated by the province, so it's likely that these red lines will increase based on all of our new growth assets over the last five years. The blue lines show where we're at for our average five-year funding. So, you can see that, let me see. It's increased by 14.6 million from our 2013 levels of 17.7 million, and now Council's putting 32.3 million towards our reinvestment levels of our infrastructure. So, this is a really good news story. We're closing that gap, that infrastructure gap that everybody talks about. And to be clear, this is a problem all municipalities are faced with. This is not just a Niagara Falls problem. This is why the province has mandated so many things related to asset management planning. So, we wanted to highlight the next steps. In July, well, before July, by July 1, the city is required to come up with our strategic asset management policies. This will need to be endorsed by Council. This is coming from Ontario Regulation 588, and it's provincially mandated. Then, coming up July 2021, we need to have our updated asset management plan addressing the core infrastructure. So, that would be the first set of slides I showed you with the roads, water, sewer, storm and bridges. And July 1, 2023, we need an asset management plan for all infrastructure. So, then this would encompass vehicles, furniture, machinery, equipment and land. And then, 2024, we need to define our, add our proposed levels of service and our financial strategy. So, by 2024, the province is going to want to see us have a fully funded asset management in place. So, recommendations, number one, was that you approve the budget today, but we're going to delay that. Council approved the ordering of one fire tanker and two 60-foot transit buses in 2019 with payment and delivery to incur in 2020 for a total of $2.5 million. That Council approved the water meter replacement program with expenditures and funding to occur over four years for a total of $12.1 million. There is a subsequent report that will be presented to Council related to the water meter replacement procurement process. And then the fourth recommendation would be that staff report back with additional capital infrastructure spending, once the final OLG payment has been received and reserve reconciliation has been completed. Questions?
Any questions of capital for Ms. Clark?
Today, we want to do it next week. I want, we want to do it twice. Have we closed the budget?
Yes. You mean, right now? Is it in the capital budget?
Well, it's in there for the food.
Yeah. Yeah. Any questions of Ms. Clark on capital? I mean, I understand probably the same situation, that the capital budget will be referred to the March 19 meeting, but if there's any questions that we can get off the table now? No? Or direction?
For all.
Okay. So, a motion to defer it to the 19th, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Ainoni. There's no questions, so all those in favor, opposed motions carried. That concludes my part of the meeting. I'm sorry, Mr. Todd.
To the Chair, I would just like to say, if, between now and the 19th, if there are any counselors, or all of you, or any of you, that want to come in, got a whole team here that I can tell you, can give you detailed answers on every one of these projects. And we have never really been asked, say, on Tab 10, to give the kind of detail that was asked tonight, but I can tell you, every night, we've been sitting here with answers to those questions, and really have never been asked in the past. This staff is very knowledgeable. So, we've never been asked to put it on paper, but we're here, all of the staff here can answer those questions. I'm just imploring you to come and talk to us, set up a point. They're, they're open and available anytime you want to meet. And if we can have a lot of those questions answered before we get here and make this process easier on the 19th, we're happy to do that. So, please do that, and I think that can make this process a lot easier as we move forward.
Counsel Ainoni.
Again, I'm going to say, I only got halfway through, so I don't have a list of questions underneath. It's not an insult, or I'm not trying to be derogatory to staff, just didn't get a chance to read the rest of them to ask the questions. And we did try to, we did try to talk to each other today, we just missed each other when we were communicating. But I want to say, that, that information is, until we went line by line today, wouldn't have, I wouldn't have asked it. So, when, it's easier to go line to line when somebody else is doing the scope and you're able to, to work that out. And so, having a hard copy with actuals and project, and budgeted in actuals and what we did in the interim is fantastic for us.
Mr. Chair, if I could just say, I could tell you, the staff here is passionate about all of these projects. And they, we don't, we like to be here answering the questions. That, we, we don't mind that at all. We don't take that personally at all, because if we have the answers, we want to get that out to you. And we want you to know what the answers are to these questions. They are passionate about all these projects. They will talk as long as you want about these projects and tell you the details of them. So, please, again, we just, we just would love to do that before the next meeting to help it along. Okay, I have the Mayor, Counselor Carrio.
And just one other thing I'd suggest, too, and I like this idea, that anyone, you've got any ideas, send them to us in advance, so you don't just drop them on us on the 19th or whatever the meeting's date's going to be, so we have time to go through them and think about them, if it's possible, just for the courtesy of us looking at the ideas as well.
Right. Okay. Counselor Carrio.
I was just going to say, similar comment. Appreciate the opportunity that our CEO is offering. As soon as I get a copy, we get copies of the hard budget, I'll be making an appointment to come down, and I'd rather do it when they have time, rather than take it up here gladly.
Okay. If there isn't anything else, I'll pass the meeting back over to the Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. So, now we're moving on to reports, is that right, Mr. Clark? Okay, so, 9.1, Staff Counsel Relations and Pregnancy and Paternal Leave of Members of Council Policies. So, did anyone want to speak to that of staff, or are you just looking for us to approve it? So, looking for, if you don't have any questions, we're looking for approval of that report. Moved by Counsel Ainoni, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo.
Can these be adopted, be adapted at a later time? Like, I was going to ask for the council staff relations to be deferred, because I think, I think it's a one-way document. But I don't have a problem approving it tonight if later on we can adapt some changes to it based on different issues.
Does the President have any data to ask approval?
That one, or the pregnancy?
Yep. Mr. Dark, did you?
Well, I think the, because of Bill 1, Bill 68, we need these approved by March 1, but we certainly can come back to these policies if there's any questions or clarity that, or amendments that are, might be required at a later date. In fact, I think we, we do want to do that, because a lot of these different policies intersect with the, you know, the staff council relations policy, so we certainly will do that.
So, the council staff relations policy under Bill 68 has to be done today, or was it just the relations parental leave policy?
They both do, through the Chair, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Oh, one other, thank you. And one other thing. These have to be done today, but have, has, are you going to schedule a council 168, 132 training? Trent and I have had this conversation for a couple of years, but it's mandatory with staff, but it's also mandatory with boards of directors, and we've never had either of those training as a desert. I attended with staff, but council did not have them.
So, is that through HR, that we'd coordinate that? Mr. Dark?
Yeah, well, if that's the will of council, I certainly will arrange that.
Okay, well, why don't we do this then? Do you need a, do you need a motion on that, or just is that?
I'll make, I'll make two motions. So, I move the approval of HR 21902.
Yeah, okay, so we've got the motion for everyone that we just had moved by Counselor Ainoni, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you for that.
And I'd also move that council be, council have a presentation from staff. We did have it at one point on an agenda, it had been canceled, it had never come back to us, that council get the Bill 168, Bill 132 training.
Bill 168, Bill 132 training. Need a second, Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? Okay, great. That's off to Mr. Dark. Thank you for that. Item 9.2, Downtown BIA request for the reinstatement of paid parking. There's two recommendations, that council approve the installation of paid parking, and secondly, that staff prepare a follow-up report in one year. So, looking for a motion, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. Now, the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda.
Okay, is there anyone that wanted anything removed from the consent agenda? Okay? Seeing nothing? Then we will move the consent agenda, moved by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Strange. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you. Moving down to 11.1, Under Communications and Comments of the City Clerk, Goodwill Niagara is having a flag raising request. They're asking that we do it on June 3 for their 25th anniversary. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. And Item 11.2, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Strange, that the 9th Annual Italian Heritage Month flag raising take place on Friday, June 9, in front of City Hall. All those in favor? And that's approved as well. Thank you. Item 11.3, there's a motion.
Yeah. Counselor.
Okay.
Receiving file.
Receiving file. That conflict declared by Counselor Peter Angelo. What's that, Counselor?
Is that a consent?
No, that's not. That's under communications.
It's passed.
So, motion by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Dubrowski, that we receive and file the air conditioner report from Thorold. Item 11.4, School Bus Safety. We've got Pierre Ranger requesting that school bus, school bus upgrades and policing. Yeah, it doesn't really involve the city putting cameras on them. Okay. Motion by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Strange, that we receive and file the school bus safety report. All those in favor? It's approved. Thank you. Now, this one, I did want to just address it. We did a little bit of research on the naming of MTO bridges. They're requesting a letter of support. It's been brought to my attention, typically, the way this should happen is, first, the request should go to the chief of police and the consent of the deceased family, then it would come to this council. So, perhaps we could send a reply back that, you know, nicely redirects them first to the chief of police, not to see, see them, and consent to the deceased family, and then it could come back to us for support. So, we can get a motion in that direction. Moved by Counselor LaCoco, seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you. Item 11.6, Student Bus Rides. Mayor's Youth Advisory requesting the month of March be 50 cents. Moved by Counselor Strange, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Excuse me, that's approved. Thank you. Item 11.7. Item 11.7, The Mayor's Accessibility Advisory Committee Appointments. You'll see the ballots have been presented to council and our acting clerk will read the new members of the committee.
Yeah, there was a recommendation for electing anywhere from 10 to 14 members. Based on the tallies here, I would suggest that 14 be appointed. And those being Sandra Byrd, Sunny Shadha, Sean Deglish, Angela Dumal, Hilda Fair, Barbara Gonzalez Castillo, Ian Greaves, Pam Green, Paisley Janvery Poole, Brian Kahn, George McKinnon, Bob Romanek, Pam Stewart and Jack Witter.
So looking for a motion to approve the new board? Moved by Councillor Dubrowski, seconded by Councillor Thompson. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. 11.8 is the Downtown BIA. They brought forward the Downtown Board of Management appointees. So looking for an endorsement of council to appoint them. Moved by Councillor Thompson, seconded by Councillor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. Resolutions? Any resolutions, Mr.?
We don't have any resolutions, but this might be a good time to do ratification of in camera.
Yes.
Council met earlier this evening in camera after a resolution was passed to go into a closed meeting. To be ratified, that staff be directed to issue the final inspections on units 1 through 36 within the towns of Mount Carmel. And should any property owner not be satisfied with the outcome of these inspections, any recourse be through either civil court or by filing a legal claim with the city through the risk management for evaluation.
So we need a motion to what? Ratify?
Just to ratify the action.
Okay. Motion to ratify the actions of the in-camera meeting? Motion by Councillor Carrion, seconded by... Can I second it? I need a second just to ratify the in-camera. Thank you. Seconded by Councillor Strange. All those in favor? All right, thank you. That's good. Shush, shush. Okay, now onto the bylaws. Any additional bylaws, Mr. Clark?
No.
No. Okay. Motion by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor Dubrowski, that the bylaws be given a first, second and third reading. All those in favor? And that's approved. Thank you for that. New business? Do we have any... We don't have any new business? Come on, no new... Oh, why did I know? Councillor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just a comment. I'm hoping that over the next year or so, we can make a couple of connections with our trails. First of all, I know that the people who use the trail in between McGary and McLeod, especially the students of St. Mike's, none of whom I know, are very happy that that connection was finally made from McLeod up to McGary. There's still one more section of trail in that Gardner West, I guess, walking path that isn't connected yet. And that would be the one that goes from Upper Canada to St. Michael Avenue. It goes through a Hydro corridor. And the last time I had asked, I know that it was said that we needed an agreement with Hydro in order to actually extend the trail through there. So I'm hoping we can get that agreement in place. Maybe give direction to staff to that so that the entire trail can finally be connected. Because right now, we kind of have two halves. And it's nice because once you connect the trails, then obviously you can walk a lot further. And right now, Empire Homes is building a trail system through their development as well. That's also going to go onto the east side of Kayla Road. So those people from Gardner West who are up north of McLeod are going to be able to walk south all through the trail system there, get the Heartland Forest, et cetera. So being able to, I guess, provide that connection would be great. The other connection that I know I've spoken about in the past is the one that would go from the Millennium Trail to the Niagara Parks Commission. And a few years ago, actually, we opened up the northerly part of the Millennium Trail that ends at Werple Road. And I know at one point, there was a design that was proposed that when you come off the trail, you would kind of circle back and take the railway bridge back over top of the canal. Because at some point, you have to go over the canal in order to get to the Niagara Parkway. I think that that went to the Parks Commission. And for some reason, I don't know if it wasn't accepted there or if it was put on hold. But being able to create that connection would obviously open up a world of opportunities in terms of, you know, the distance that you can go on a trail. So I notice I see some construction on the corner. So I don't know if it's the Parks Commission who has put up a fence around that gully area there. That's just east of the Hydro corridor. But somehow, we have to make a connection from the Millennium Trail to the Niagara Parks Commission trail. And I don't know whether or not we have any design in place. I know in the past, we did, but I haven't seen it in a lot of years, so.
I think the Seattle...
So through Mr. Mayor, actually, we had this conversation a week or so ago. And our staff is going back to connect with the Parks Commission staff to get that back on the front burner to see what designs we can come up with. And, you know, the Garner design for that missing link was actually in the capital budget that you just deferred till May. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Beautiful. All right. Sounds good.
Any other new business, Councillor?
No, that's it.
Any other new business?
German.
Oh, motion for our German, Councillor Carrion, seconded by Councillor Thompson. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. What's that? Oh, yeah, I was...